Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. It's Monday, September 18th, 2023. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here in the council chambers and online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks to everybody for joining us this evening on our last council meeting of the summer of 2023. This is our last one for the summer. Appreciate everyone here. We are missing one council member tonight. Councilmember Nelson is not with us, and Mr. Verbrugge is joining us online. I'm obviously masked up tonight because I've got the crud, and I don't want to give it to everybody up here. And also, I've been hanging out with people who have been testing positive for COVID, so I want to make sure that we don't get anybody sick. So that's why I'm masked up tonight. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. And on our agenda, we have, under introductory items, we're going to meet some new employees here in the city of Bloomington. We have two proclamations. Item 2.2 is a proclamation for Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month. And item 2 point... 2 point... There it is. 2.3, we have a proclamation for the International Day of Peace. 2.4, we've got a Sustainability Commission appointment to make this evening. Our consent business, and Councilmember Martin has our consent business. It is a lengthy one. We've got 19 items on our consent agenda tonight. And under item 4, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got item 4.1 and 4.2 is the resolutions adopting our preliminary 2024 tax levy and preliminary 2024 general fund budget. Next up, under our hearings and resolutions, are an annual item we take up, public hearings to do assessments regarding our public nuisances, our public nuisance abatement, tree removal assessments, our weed and brush removal, delinquent assessments, and then civil fines for property-related violations and assessments. Item 4.8 is a public hearing regarding rezoning from Lyndale Avenue properties from B2 to B4. And then item 4.9 is approval of our neighborhood traffic management and plan with an opportunity for public comment on that proposed plan. We'll wrap up this evening with our item 5.1, which is our city council policy and issue update as we always do. Council, any changes, additions, subtractions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion in the second for tonight's agenda. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. We've got an agenda. Item 2.1 on the agenda is the introduction of new employees. And I think we have a total of 246 new employees within our Public Works Department. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Carl Keel, is going to be Master of Ceremonies here. Good evening, Mr. Keel. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A pleasure to be with you. This evening, we have six new employees that I'd like to introduce, all from our Maintenance Division, but from different work groups in our Maintenance Division. So we'll start out with Facilities Maintenance and like to introduce Chad Haynes. Chad is a Facilities Attendant over here at Civic Plaza, comes to us with over six years of experience in property management, but before that had spent 25 years in the horse business as a trainer and taking care of shows for horses. He's an Army veteran, grew up in Lakeville. He says it when it was still a small town, but I think he still lives there. He also has hosted students from Sweden and developed a strong relationship with those families and maintains that, and visits Sweden whenever he's able. Finally, I'd say about Chad is he's a rabid gopher hockey fan and has held season tickets for over 20 years. So, Chad.
I'm thankful to be a part of the city and look forward to great adventures here with you.
Well, good evening. Thanks for being with us this evening, Chad. I also remember when Lakeville was a small town.
Yes.
It's not anymore.
Way too big.
Welcome aboard. We're glad to have you onboard. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Next is Joe. Joe Kubasecki. Joe is a technician in our Facilities Maintenance Group, comes with us with over 10 years of experience in facilities maintenance, most recently with Ramsey County with their Parking Recreation Department. While here, he's completed his carpentry course at Summit Academy and just recently got his CDL, that's his Commercial Driver's License, so we can use him for snow plowing, which is a good thing. Joe grew up in St. Paul, and when not at work, he loves time spending time with his wife and his two children, one quite young, I think.
Yes.
So, Joe.
It's an honor and a privilege to work with this wonderful county, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Well, thank you for being with us, Joe, and not to imply that we will use you for snow plowing. We won't use any of our employees. We appreciate the efforts that they make within our snow plowing, but glad to have you onboard. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
You'll contribute to our plowing.
There we go.
Kyle Kusinski.
Yep.
Kyle is... Now, we're moving over to our Fleet Maintenance Group. These are the folks that take care of all the vehicles and equipment in the city. And Kyle is one of those folks. He's a Fleet Maintenance Technician, has come to us with seven years of experience, most recently with the freight liner business, so with heavy, heavy equipment. Before that, had spent some time in kind of the more the building maintenance and management for four years. And he has gone to Dakota County Technical College, and he has a number of certificates in all kinds of different equipment related to Fleet Maintenance-type activities. So, and kind of as a side note, he has, he grew up in Bloomington. So, welcome, Kyle.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate the time and everything and being able to be employed here.
Well, thank you for being with us. Where did you grow up here in Bloomington?
82nd Nicklet.
Oh, very good.
Right next to McDonald's.
Welcome.
Sophie, if we go on to Fleet Maintenance, still in Fleet Maintenance, Ponky... Sorry. Sophie Pong Savat is a Office Support Specialist in our Maintenance Group. So she's the person that kind of keeps track of all the different types of work that's going on, the ordering of parts, the ordering of equipment, all kinds of support services that keeps our operation functioning. Comes to us with 10 years of experience, again, most recently at Ramsey County, has a BA degree in management and a concentration in logistics and operations, and grew up in Twin Cities, and when not here, likes to do yoga and take walks around the lake, spend time with friends, and travel whenever possible. Sophie.
Nice to meet everyone.
Welcome, Sophie.
Thank you.
Great. Now, over to Street Maintenance. We'll start with Tom Hilgert. Tom? Tom is an equipment operator and comes to us with 11 years of experience in the steel manufacturing industry. He has an Associate's Degree from Hennepin Tech, grew up in Bloomington, where he lives with his wife and his son. He enjoys time with his family at the lake in the summer and playing hockey in the parks during the winter. So, Tom.
Thank you. I look forward to serving the citizens of Bloomington.
Well, good. Thank you so much. We're happy to have you here and happy to have you here with us tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
And our last new employee for this evening is Pat Kelly. Pat is also in our Street Maintenance Bunch. He's an equipment operator, has a Commercial Driver's License, and 10 years of experience, two years at Demcon most recently. Grew up in Elko New Market, so on the south side of the Twin Cities, loves time, loves to spend time hunting and fishing and traveling and hanging out with family and friends. Welcome, Pat.
Thanks. Looking to good roads ahead. Pun intended.
Well done. Well done. Thanks for being here. So, Tom, Pat, Chad, Joe, Kyle, and Sophie, thank you very much for taking the time to come here this evening and introduce yourself. It's great to introduce yourself to us here on the council, but also to the general public so they can see the servants of the city of Bloomington, the people who are serving them, and the good work that you're doing. And appreciate your being here and looking forward to seeing more of you and looking forward to the work that you're going to do. So, thanks for being here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Our next two items on the agenda are resolutions, so I'm going to make my way down to the podium As I said, we have two resolutions this evening. The first being a resolution in support for Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month. And we're going to be presenting this, and it's going to be officially received by Dara Lee Navarro. Why don't you come on up, if you could, please? Dara Lee is President of the Employee Resource Group Edge, which stands for Ethnic Diverse Group of Employees. And I'll let you introduce yourself here in just a moment and your special guest, if you'd like, or I'll be happy to introduce your special guest also. So, all right, so I want to get started on the proclamation for Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2023. Whereas in 1988, the United States Congress adopted a resolution designating September 15th to October 15th of each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas September 15th is the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Additionally, Mexico achieved independence on September 16th, and Chile achieved independence on September 18th. And whereas this month's theme, Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America, is a time to reflect on the future of the city of Bloomington and the significant role that the Latinx Hispanic community has had and will have on our city's prosperity, power, and progress, recognizing the significant strides of Latinx Hispanic people in economic, political, and social growth. And whereas the Latinx Hispanic community's rich cultural heritage has had a profound influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and services, and they have enhanced and shaped our national heritage with centuries of old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas the city of Bloomington is home to more than 9,000 Latinx Hispanic residents, the city of Bloomington remains committed to ensure Latinx Hispanic residents who call Bloomington home have every opportunity to achieve their dreams, feel safe, welcomed, and embraced despite the ongoing challenges in social justice and civil rights that exist within society. And whereas honoring and celebrating the history, achievements, contributions, and diversity of the Latinx Hispanic community will build and foster relationships between all communities throughout Minnesota. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussey, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim September 15th through September 15th, October 15th, 2023, as Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month dated this 18th day of September, 2023. This is an annual proclamation that we have been doing for the past couple of years. I'm proud that we have the opportunity to do this. I think it's an important proclamation that we have and one that certainly is relevant in so many different ways. And Dara Lee, now you are, is it born in Bogota, Colombia? Is that correct? Very good. And you've been, you came to the United States when you were 20 and moved to Georgia, from Georgia to Minnesota a couple of years ago, and played with the city for a couple of years. And now you're working on your master's degree in planning. Is that correct? Very excited to have you, very proud to have you here, and proud to have you as an employee. And I won't steal your thunder. I'll let you, if you'd like to say a few words, and I'd like to have you introduce your special guest as well. Come on. No.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Sorry, I'm giving you my back. So Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to celebrate diversity. This is a term that encompasses from many different countries, regions, languages, and cultures, from the Caribbean to South America, from Spain to the United States. Hispanic and Latino communities have played an important role in shaping the United States. Their influence can be seen in art, culture, science, politics, and much more. The innovating, innovation, and dedication have created jobs and fuel economic growth as training our communities in the process. It is an honor to stand before you today. I have a guest, an important guest, which is my mom here today, and this is for all the parents out there who left everything behind to give their children a better future, to provide the children with the opportunities that they were never given. This is for you, Mom, who are, you're here today, and for my sister, who is probably watching me at home. A thank you is not enough, and if it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here today. Finally, just let us learn from the stories and achievement of the Hispanic and Latin Americans, and let us work together to ensure that the contributions continue to shape our nation for the future generations. And let us embrace the spirit of unity for a Bloomington tomorrow together.
Thank you so very much. I think we officially need to get a picture, and then we'll officially call Mom up for a picture as well. Okay, come on. You've got to come up for the picture also.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight. It's very nice. Thank you. My second proclamation this evening is for the International Day of Peace, which is September 21st, 2023. I'll just get into the proclamation, do a bit of explanation a bit afterward. So, the International Day of Peace, September 21st, 2023. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration. And whereas in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace, both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas, as our communities and our world continue to see a rise in division and conflict, our city remains dedicated to peace, which affirms a vision of our world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. And whereas, the year 2023 marks 16 years of Civic Plaza as a peace site, which represents our commitment to seek peace within ourselves and others, reach out in service, protect the environment, respect diversity, foster inclusivity, and be responsible citizens of the world. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussey, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2023, as the International Day of Peace dated this 18th day of September, 2023. Now, the theme for this year's International Day of Peace is Actions for Peace, which is appropriate. It's not just the words, it's the actions of peace. And it's a call for action that recognizes individual and collective responsibility to foster peace wherever we are. And as I've, as I mentioned here, 16 years of Civic Plaza as a peace site, and I know there are other peace sites across the city of Bloomington and within a number of our schools, and I think we have peace poles representing throughout the city at all of our schools. I think our most, our newest one is at Normandale Van Shell. It really does make a mark, make a significant commitment, or shows the city's commitment to seeking that peace, not just within ourselves, but also acting toward peace and making sure that we have peace within and throughout our community. So, proud to declare this International Day of Peace on September 21st, 2023, and hope you can all recognize it in one way or another in your own hearts. So, thank you also very much. Next on our agenda is item 2.4, and that is an appointment to our Sustainability Commission. And within this Sustainability Commission vacancy, we have one opening, and we had five applicants. And I know that a screening process was done, and there is a recommendation regarding the appointment to our Sustainability Commission. And the interview panel, Councilmember Dalisandro, and Angela Bagash from our Sustainability Commission did the interviews and came forward with the recommendation. And I think the Sustainability Commission recommendation was to, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Councilmember Dalisandro, to appoint Sean McFarlane to a term on the date to the appointment, with the appointment of February 28th, 2026.
That is correct.
Very good. Council, so that is the recommendation that is brought forward to us with other strong candidates, but this was the recommendation of the appointment to the Sustainability Commission. Unless there's a discussion for other possible appointments to the Sustainability Commission, I'd look for a motion. Councilmember Loman.
Now, Mayor, when we get to policy and issue updates, I don't want to talk about the recommendation. I'm sure that my colleague did a fine job along with the panel. I'd like to talk about when we schedule these things to just ensure that we get as many council members there as possible, but we can talk about that when we get down to the policies and issued updates.
Sounds good. Understood. Councilmember Dalisandro?
I'd be happy to make the motion. Just let me get my act together here. Sorry. So yes, the motion is to appoint Sean McFarlane to a term from the date of appointment, which I assume is today.
Will be today.
To February 28th, 2026, on the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to appoint Sean McFarlane to the Sustainability Commission, effective today, running through February 28th, 2026. Any further council discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Congratulations, Sean. Congratulations to the Sustainability Commission on their newest member. Very good. Item three on the agenda is our consent business, and Councilmember Martin has tonight's lengthy consent agenda. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So far, I have only heard holds from Councilmember Loman on items 3.4 and 3.5. Was there any others? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move approval of 3.1 to 3.3 and 3.6 through 3.19.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter, to accept tonight's consent business as stated, excluding 3.4 and 3.6. Is that correct?
Four and five.
Four and five, excuse me. Four and five, 3.4, 3.5, otherwise as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Loman, item 3.4.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a resolution for budget adjustments to transfer from the Strategic Priority Funds to the City Facilities Fund. And my understanding is this is for a remodel of one of our departments. And what I'm just trying to get, just trying to get some clarity on some things here, just so I understand, you know, is this what we've done in the past in terms of, you know, using, you know, what essentially is a fund that the council utilizes for its strategic priorities, you know, to do things, you know, for a, for staff group? That's, that's one question I have, if the manager has that, and I've got several other ones I'd like to ask.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have not, in my recollection, tapped the Strategic Priorities Fund for a major remodel project like this. And I'd also say, at least in our time, that we haven't had a major remodel project like this, and the Facilities Fund is strained to support it exclusively. Where it fits within the Strategic Priorities Fund is that this is the product of a study that we did about a year and a half ago regarding the HRA and the Port Authority, and how we were going to, how we were going to utilize those two entities, furthering the strategic work of the city council. And part of that outcome was to bolster the Port Authority in a pretty significant way that we had to add capacity in the Community Development Department in bringing on new staff. And so part of this is realignment to match with the recommendations from the HRA and the Port Authority realignance, and everything else just follows from it. We are getting to a point in the city where these facilities are reaching the, they're useful, and we can certainly get more years out of them, but when we have to bring in new staff and we're trying to accommodate moving around to do that, the approach at this time was to look at the remodel as being the right thing to do. So that's, that's why we're utilizing the Strategic Priorities Fund. I'd also note that the HRA and the Port Authority have each contributed to this project a significant amount, and also trying to not tap the Facilities Fund too much because we have other needs there.
And I'm also just trying to also understand how much this amount is, you know? I've been, you know, depending on how you count this, and I'm not sure if I'm counting this correctly, it looks like it's almost, you know, 1.4 million? Or is it, or is it 900? Or is it a million? What is it that we have here? Because I see the furniture here, which is the next item here, is 3.5, is $535. Is that included in the amount that gets us up to the 800 or 900, $1,000? It's just not clear to me where this is coming from and what the total cost of the remodel is.
Our councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, the total project cost is 900,000. The 500,000 is coming from Strategic Priorities Fund, and the remainder is being contributed by the HRA and the Port Authority.
So it's $900,000 plus the 500? No.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the total project cost is 900,000. What's being asked for the Strategic Priorities Fund is the 500,000.
Okay. For the furniture?
That's for the entire project. So it's walls and fixtures and furnishings, cabinets, chairs, all of it.
Okay. It's just, I have a dot, you know, Mayor, I've never seen us do, use our strategic priority dollars in this way. I'm not saying that's, that's right or wrong, but I just have never seen us do this before. And the concern that I have with, with going down this route, and I certainly can see the connection with a strategic priority, but, you know, there are other parts of the city that probably also need, you know, fixing up and that type of thing. And I know that when we had the situation with the fire department, we wanted to utilize the strategic priorities, we made a plan that that's what we were, we're going to do, and then we designated those dollars over several years to kind of do that. And what my fear is, is that we would start down this process for this department, recognizing that we have several other departments that need to have upgrades and upticks, and we're kind of just doing this piecemeal, kind of, you know, not being planful about this. And, you know, from my standpoint, I could support this particular thing if we have a plan around it and it's something we plan on doing on an ongoing basis. You know, we say we're going to take dollars from the Strategic Priority Plan each year, and we're going to look at different departments and try to upgrade them and updo them. I just don't know that I can support this use of the strategic priorities in this fashion. This is just totally not something I've ever seen us do, and I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with this. That's the very usage of a, you know, our capital funds, is to be able to utilize those for that. And if we didn't properly put our dollars aside for that, I just don't, that makes sense to kind of do this. I'm just afraid about this precedence we're starting here, and I have no problem starting that if we are going to move into an initiative by which we want to invest in the rest of the city. There are lots of other parts of the city that I think, you know, could also use a touch up, and I'd like us to be planful about it, Mayor.
Councilmember Dalisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. So just for context, I don't, I'm not 100, I'm not intending to be argumentative with you, Councilmember Loman, but to say it's one department, I think, is a little bit of a misnomer, right? It's... It's more than 80 people across everything from buildings and inspections to our assessor's office, to the HRA, to the Port Authority, to the clerk's office. You know, it's a significant amount of, of the population of the people that do work every day. It represents at least two of the counters that we support, everything from passport services to licensing to, and, you know, to permitting, to all of us showing up as candidates to get our election certificates and stuff like that organized. I mean, it's all of that, right? So I want to be careful that we're not, we're, we're kind of thinking about this as just a, like a one person over on the corner deciding to do some kind of vanity project. I don't think that that's correct, and I'm not suggesting that's what you said, but I want to make sure contextually we have that clear. The other thing is, it is kind of planful. I mean, maybe not the Strategic Priorities Fund piece of it, but I think that based on the data that we received when we were looking at this, this goes back to more than, you know, for 2021, even before I'd been on council, when this has been looked at. We, as a council, made the decision to make the changes in the Port Authority and the HRA. We did that, that, that triggers a lot of this change requirement, right? To make it so that those folks can do a better job of working with their partners in buildings and inspections or environmental health. Like, I love the direction we're going in with environmental health and the HRA working together. So we're not just bringing a stick to those conversations, we're bringing a carrot as well, right? To say to folks, hey, we want to actually help you stay in your home. The goal is not to find you and find you and find you and assess you until you can't be here anymore. The goal is to make that, that home something that's part of the stock of Bloomington that's valuable. The HRA has levers for that, but they're sitting literally as far away from, as possible from each other, and they don't have a chance to interact regularly. And that's, that's not good for the efficiency of the government, as far as I'm concerned. I had the chance to actually go through the site. I don't know if anybody else has taken a tour of the area we're talking about, but it's also really unsafe in a lot of ways. There's some sections of it that the only way that you could get out in like a fire or an active shooter situation is to break a window. And so like, I don't think that that's probably good. I think we should probably do better about that and stuff like that, too. And so I think that we're going to get multiple benefits from this project. Now, the question about whether strategic priorities funds should be used for it or not is a, a good question, an open question. I, I made the same concerns, and I, I thought, well, you know, one, just because we have these numbers, that we don't know that these numbers are going to be the numbers, right? There's money, there's money there that, excuse me, there's money there that is contingency and stuff like that. It may not get used, right? And I would certainly expect that any money that was not used comes right back into the Strategic Priorities Fund. It doesn't sit over there in community developed, development to be used for something else, right? So I certainly would hope that that would be the case. And then the second thing I'll say on that is, if community development was putting this money aside over time, which, you know, would be the right way to do it, it might take them 10 or 12 years to get to the funding level we're talking about here, in which case, we would not be getting the benefit of all of that efficiency during that time, even though we, as council, have asked them to take on this additional responsibility and make these strategic changes. So I think of it more like a loan than a, like a strategic priorities, like gift, if you will, in the sense that I feel like we're going to get it back in a couple of ways strategically, right? One, better efficient use of the, of the, the people and the work that they do. Number two, the expectations that we have of them to move revenue generating projects through the city in a better way, like all the community development we want them to do in our, you know, commercial nodes, for example. And then three, we will get some of the money back just by virtue of the, of the fact that this probably won't cost as much as we're estimating it will, because that, that, you know, there's carryover and other things like that that they can find. So those, those are my thoughts on it, and that's why I'm, I'm cool with it. Thanks.
Before you respond, councilmember, I'd like to let others weigh in, too. Is Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say that, agree with a lot of what Councilmember Dalisandro said. I also want to say that, I want to thank Community Development Director Carla Henderson. There was so much staff engagement that went into this. And post-pandemic, not to say we're like post-pandemic, I don't even know what that means, but now that we're at this point, there are a lot of organizations, companies rethinking how people come back to work, or if they're going to work full-time in the office or not, you know, and, and having to spend resources on these types of projects. And so it's not surprising to me that, that we're here and that we're, you know, looking at how we can more effectively have staff working together. And again, from a leadership perspective, I just think it speaks volumes to Carla's leadership that, I mean, she spent over a year engaging with staff, getting their input in the design and the layout and, you know, how things functionally should work, and she didn't have to do that. And so I just want to thank her for her leadership in this space. You know, although I also hear what you're saying, Councilmember Lohman, and I, and you know me, I love the kind of longer-term strategic goal-setting conversations, and I do welcome that conversation, especially as we go into the next year, to think about how do we really want to use those funds? And not kind of have this more reactive, like, and now here's this thing, and now here's this thing. So totally agree with you on that. But otherwise, I do plan on supporting the proposal put forth to us tonight, because I do agree that there are going to be significant benefits to the work that we want to see accomplished in the city.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to weigh in. You know, certainly, I'm not opposed to the remodel. I've let Carla know that, and I think you've done fine work, not opposed to that. My, the, the key to my issue here is the use of the strategic priority dollars. You know, and, you know, if my colleagues want to go along and do that, that's, that's perfectly fine. But from a, you know, from a responsibility in terms of how we, we do this, we really need to think about, you know, what we're, what precedents we're starting here. And again, I think this is a, a fine way, if we, if we agree that this is what we want to do, not only with this, this department, but we want to do this with many other apartments. And I think there are other, you know, for example, you had mentioned, you know, safety. You know, there's other parts of the city that I think that we need to upgrade the safety, and there's a number of departments and areas where I'd like us to, to, to look at trying to do that. And so to, to just simply spend this on here and then kind of stop the conversation, that has a concern for me. So I have a couple of other questions for the, for the manager. Manager, I'm just curious, when was the last time this area was renovated?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I don't recall that it has been other than some moving around of workstations in the planning area, but there hasn't been a wholesale change in, in recent memory. Most of the workstations are the original workstations, the building.
And then my last question I have for you, manager, is seemingly we have, you know, some large investments coming up with the sales piece where, you know, if we were to build another building, that may also shift and adjust where the parks and recreational area would be as well. How would we deal with those changes and the other changes that we know that are coming with, with the city's departments and, and the like that we have here? I just want to make sure this, is this a one-time thing? Are we intending to do this multiple times after this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, that's a really good question. We are actually commissioning a space study to look at those types of future issues, because I appreciate your comments about, you know, the nature of this project and, and not wanting to do these things piecemeal. We feel the same way, but again, we're following up on the, the fact that, you know, this is a little bit of a byproduct of a service assessment that we did. The space study analysis will look at those issues for the next three to five and 10 and 10 years and beyond, because we do have another, we do have other spaces in the building, like you've mentioned, councilmember, where we have some safety concerns, where we have space utilization concerns. And we've talked in the past about other spaces that are being used for storage and, you know, other expansion needs that we have. So if the local option sales tax passes and we do indeed move some of our operations into a new building, that'll be accounted for within the space study. All of those questions hopefully will be answered over the course of the next year or so, hopefully less when we're conducting that study. And I also wanted to follow up on a comment from Councilmember Dalisandro regarding the project estimates. You're correct, we always include a contingency in our project costs. And a project like this, I think we have fairly well identified what the project's costs are. So we will manage that contingency very carefully. And I think having direction from the council would be good on where you want those residual funds to go. We could put them back a third, a third, a third, or a prorated basis on the sources. So HRA Port and Strategic Priorities gets a prorated share of what they contributed. Or you can say we want it all to go to Strategic Priorities, or you can allocate it somewhere else. We don't have to do that tonight, but I think that's a, a good point by Councilmember Dalisandro that the council might want to consider.
To wrap this up, I just, you know, given, you know, we have this, and we've got also later on the levy, later on today. And so I just want to make sure that we're not going to, you know, get that information later on, and then we can't react to that in terms of what the levy looks like, because there, there are needs out there for those departments, safety needs that are there. So given, I think there's enough folks up here to, to support it. I'm not going to be supporting this the way it's written today unless I could see that plan as a part of this and, and that we look at other departments as a part of this. That's what a strategic priorities plan should be, in my opinion. This councilmember wants to support stuff, and I think that this, this leads us down a, a road of, we talked about trying to control spending. This is a way in which we've got to control our spending. We've got to be careful about how we do this, because if we start doing it here, and I certainly support this, but we need to be planful in terms of how, how we're doing this. And so I just don't think this is a good way to, to spend our budget in this, this fashion, this way.
Duly noted, councilmember, thank you. Counsel, any additional comments on this? I will say, councilmember, I agree with, and with both you and with Mr. Verbrugge in that ideally doing this in a piecemeal fashion is not ideal. But it's also not the first time we've done it. We, within the past year or so, we approved upgrades to the Police Department. We've improved upgrades to, to different departments over the years, from different funds perhaps, but in different ways, we found the money, when we've seen the need, we've, we've made the investment to improve the efficiency and the effectiveness of the department. So ideal, no. Setting a prior, will this set the, the way we, the path forward, the way we always do it? No, I wouldn't agree that would be the case either, because the city council has the authority to, to make decisions on this type of thing. And if we don't think it's appropriate, it's not appropriate. So in this case, if, if the belief is that it is appropriate, we can move forward at this time with this one. So, counsel, any additional questions or comments?
Mayor, I'm happy to-
Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Remind councilmembers, this is a budget adjustment which does require five councilmembers voting in the affirmative to pass it. So I think you have two actions. I think you have the project itself and the, and then the budget adjustment vote.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Martin?
I'm happy to make the motions.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move that we approve the budget adjustment resolution to transfer $419,433 from the $4,200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the $7,700 Facilities Fund to complete funding necessary for the Community Development remodeled project.
Do we have a second? Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Dalisandro. Essentially, what Councilmember Martin read was to accept item 3.4 on tonight's consent agenda. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five one with Councilmember Lohman in opposition. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Would, would you like the whole one, or can I just motion approval of item 3.5?
I'm sure Ms. Manderscheid would appreciate if you were reading it in the record.
Perfect. Mayor, I will move that we approve the purchase of furniture for the remodel of Community Development utilizing Omnia and Sourcewell Cooperative contracts from Interium for a total cost of $535.12.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept item 3.5 on tonight's council consent agenda. See, I get to do the shorthand, but now that it's in the record. Any, so item 3.5 on tonight's council consent business? Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Councilmember Martin. Thanks for your comments, Councilmember Lohman, appreciate you bringing that up. We will move on in tonight's agenda to our item four, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And our first item is item 4.1, which is the consideration of the preliminary 2024 tax levy. And we have with us tonight, Kari Carlson, our, I'm going to call you Budget Manager, and I know that's-
Deputy Finance Officer.
Deputy Finance, I knew that was outdated title, I apologize. Deputy Finance Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening is the night that the council will pass resolutions to set the preliminary 2024 tax levying budget. The city is required to submit this to Hennepin County by the end of the month. The, as a reminder, the preliminary tax levy amount is the maximum amount that can be levied next year. The council can lower this amount at the December 4th Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, but it cannot be increased. So here's the agenda for this evening. Similar to our discussion from last month about the budget, I will quickly review our budgetary approach, the increased public engagement that we've done, the key budget factors, preliminary tax levy, impacts to the median value home. We've added in here a comparison to other cities that we did not have last month, as well as a, a graphic for an allocation of this proposed 2024 tax dollar. And then we'll go over the, highlight some dates on the budget calendar that's still to come. So as a review, this budget continues the city's investments in public safety. It's structured to maintain the city's services that residents value and expect, and there has been a focus on the strategic allocation of resources, and the budget requests align with the city's strategic plan Bloomington Tomorrow Together. And finally, city staff and the council have increased public engagement in the budget process. Over the past few years, the city's worked to include the voices of residents in our budget process in ways that we had not done before. So we've been out about in the community, gathering feedback on what residents value and prioritize. We've been at the Normandale Lake Band Shell concerts and events, at farmers markets, kids' shows at the parks across the city, and, and open houses for departments. And we've made a point this year to not only get to a greater number of events, but also to ensure that those events are at different parts of the city and different times of the day and on different days of the week. And people that are working those events have included not only me or just finance staff, but department heads and members of the city council, which we greatly appreciate. So at the time that this presentation was published on September 13th, we had been at 11 events, and we just had another budget table at the farmer's market yesterday, or Saturday. And so at this time, or when this presentation was published, we had interacted with 673 residents. Now we are close to 800. So we had talked to a lot of people on Saturday, it was a beautiful day, we had a lot of people stop by. And the Fire Chief Uly Seal was with me, as well as Renee Clark from Parks and Recreation. So the number of resident interactions has been wonderful. And I also have an updated slide here, just a bit of a review with a little bit different numbers, because we've had another event since the last time I talked to you. So as a reminder, we've got on our budget table that we have added events in the community, we have that tabletop budget display with the information board, with the six individual canisters that are labeled, and the signs here are shown as what's on that table dot display. And as a review again, the different categories are Parks Arts, Recreation and Natural Resources, Facilities and Infrastructure, Equitable Economic Growth, Public Safety, Healthy Community, and a Connected Well-Came Community. And a lot of these mirror our Strategic Priorities Plan. And the people who stop by, we give them 10, 10 tokens, and they're asked to put those tokens in canisters. We just let them know that there's 10 tokens that represent property taxes, money, and there's six different categories of city spending, and they can put them all in one, or they can split them out, the way that they would like to show their priorities for the council. And then we also always have a free-form page, like a poster setup, where they can write comments to the, to the council as well. And those have been updated and are published in your, in the public council agenda materials. For you to see, there's, we had a lot, lot of input. And as we've stated before- And, um, as we've stated before, and I want to continue to state that we know that these results are not, uh, statistically scientific, um, just however, it has been a great education tool for the public when we're out in the community and just a way to encourage, um, the public to share their priorities with us and also an education tool. And so that, um, public can, can see what we're spending money on and then they can let us know what their priorities are. So one thing that's changed since the last time as far as the in-person engagement is, um, the, the number three rule. So like, it's still the first one that we, the highest amount of chips that we've had in, in the categories was for Parks Arts, Recreation, Natural Resources, followed closely by Public Safety. But it went from Facilities and Infrastructure to Healthy Community after we had the On the One Music Festival. Um, so that was just, there was a lot of support for that category at that event. So that was interesting. And then along with in person. Oh, I went to, oh, I'm sorry. I was, I needed to be more patient. Uh, we have our virtual option as well. So we have a few more responses, uh, from the last time we shared this and that's also, this is, the comments are also in the, in the agenda packet materials. There's a hundred and seventy-five written responses. But, um, in addition to those in-person interactions, two hundred and sixty-eight residents have filled out the priority-related survey on the Let's Talk Bloomington site. And as I said, the last time we shared those results, um, they were in the exact same order as the in-person totals, but now they've, they're a little different in that online it's Public Safety is ranked as the highest because they ranked them from one through six. And then, um, oh, that's changed actually. So, uh, yeah, so Public Safety is a little higher and then, uh, Parks is second and then Facilities is third. So a little bit different. So that's public engagement. And then factors affecting the budget request, um, just another, uh, review of the lodging tax revenues and highlighted in red there is the amount that was in twenty twenty during the pandemic and how much that fell from twenty nineteen that you see for twenty twenty-four. We are projecting that to come almost back up to where we were. And then, uh, mission tax revenues have, um, went way down in twenty twenty, of course, but have surpassed where we were in twenty nineteen. They're doing very well. And, um, unfortunately, we don't have that same story for our permit revenues. That would really help with our budget balancing a lot, but, uh, we had some really high years for permit revenues in twenty-two and, um, in previous and also in, uh, twenty-three. But for the twenty twenty-four budget, um, it's projected to be lower than what we've seen. So we will continue to monitor this as we go through, uh, this year and we get closer, um, to proposing the final tax levy. Um, but right now, these are what the revenue projections look like. So moving over to, um, expenses on the expense side, um, as I had said before, there are three significant issues that are driving city expenses next year. And the first is the labor market pressure. Um, unemployment in Minnesota is at a record low rate and competitive salaries and benefits are needed to attract and retain skilled personnel. Second expense driver is, you know, Bloomington's continued commitment to public safety. So that proposal to add six new firefighters is in this twenty twenty-four budget, um, to help with the ongoing transition to a hybrid, part-time and full-time department for, for fire department, as well as adding another dispatcher in the dispatch center is also a cost driver. And, um, that, and then another cost driver is just the economic volatility affecting costs of materials and services, which is not just unique to Bloomington, but, um, other city governments and businesses and individuals are experiencing that as well. So here's just a reminder of what was done in twenty twenty-three. So, um, and also what we're proposing in twenty-four. So in twenty-three, twenty-one full-time firefighters were added to the fire department. Eighteen of those are, were funded from a, the federal safer grant. And then, um, and then three were, came from the, the general fund budget. And then, um, in twenty-three as well, four new police officers were added as well as a new dispatch training coordinator. So, um, in addition to that, continuing with this investment in public safety for twenty-four budget, we have, uh, six full-time firefighters and a new dispatcher. And so this next slide just has the twenty twenty-four staffing changes. So the two I just talked about with firefighters and dispatch. But then also wanted to mention, um, for Parks and Recreation, these are not new staffing positions, but an, in, um, a reclass of, a proposed reclass of three staff positions from part-time to full-time in order for them to be able to, um, do more and, um, address, uh, service needs that are very much needed in Parks and Recreation. Okay, so this, uh, preliminary budget request, um, as we looked at it before, this results in a nine point four nine percent increase from twenty twenty-three. And that would translate into a five point six five percent tax increase for the median value home. And that equates to six dollars, twenty-eight cents more a month, um, for twenty twenty-four. So as I said before, the twenty twenty-four preliminary levy sets the maximum amount that the city can collect in property taxes for next year. And the council can lower that number in December fourth, uh, but once this preliminary levy is set and submitted to Hennepin County, it can't raise above that. I want to say too, that in October and November, there will be department budget presentations that are in-depth in all of these different areas. So as you get closer to setting that final tax levian budget. So this, before I talked about what a nine point four nine percent tax levy increase, how that would impact the median value home, um, by month. So in the month, there it is in the middle. So right now it's at a hundred and eleven dollars and nine cents a month. It would go up six dollars and twenty-eight cents. If you wanted to see that like on a weekly basis or an annual basis, so an annual basis, that would be seventy-five dollars and thirty-four cents for the median value home. And, um, we were discussing the budget last month. Uh, we talked about like not just the median value home for the entire city, but just a request to kind of see how maybe that plays out differently across the city. So I reached out, um, to our assessing division and if you recognize the way that the city is split up on this slide, these are the assessing quintiles. So the city's divided in five different areas. And, um, they use that in order to do a, a deep dive assessment of homes in each one of those quintiles. So this is looking at it more, um, in each of those separate sections and, uh, the median value home in those sections. So it's not just to show, like when we talk about the median value home, it does change across, you know, the city. So, um, over on the west, for example, it's thirteen dollars, sixty-nine cents per month more with a nine point four nine percent tax levy for that median value home. And then you can see, um, just going across the top there, seven dollars, forty-three cents a month more, four forty-four, seven thirty-six, and then down south, uh, nine ninety-five. So just kind of another way to, to look at that other than just the median value home for the entire city. And then another slide, uh, we've added is that comparison slide. So a lot of cities, just like us, they're, they're doing this right now at their council meetings and their, um, the councils are setting their preliminary tax levy. So this is the twenty twenty-three because we have those numbers. But just to show you where we are currently in twenty twenty-three compared to other cities. So this is the median value home per month that it's in red there from Bloomington, that a hundred and eleven dollars and nine cents and just kind of where we fall in, um, these other cities that we compare ourselves to that are either in Hennepin County or they're else, um, a similar, um, size as us and comparable. And, uh, just another kind of different way, like sometimes with a lot of numbers, it's hard to get a sense of how that, the whole, uh, property tax levy is being allocated. So like to do it, um, we will, we usually use something like this when we send out the notice that goes in the Truth and Taxation, um, that notice in November. So, um, you can see a, a majority, um, of property taxes are going to public safety with police and fire, it's about half. So if you, this is, this is representing like one dollar property, city property taxes. And then, um, the next biggest amount is seventeen cents would be for Public Works and then fourteen cents for Parks and Recreation. I want to note when we were looking, if we were to look at this for the twenty twenty-three property tax, um, it would be much larger for Public Works compared to Parks and Recreation because we have shifted, uh, a number of employees in our park maintenance division into Parks and Recreation. So now the, the Public Works and the Parks and Recreation allocation are more similar. So, um, that's one thing that's changed. And then seven cents for community development, six cents for community services, and then six cents for capital debt. Um, these are kind of review slides, these first two, um, just wanted to show these again. So this is a way where we take the increase in the property tax levy, the, the net of everything, and we're allocating them out across those service departments. So, you know, finance, um, admin, uh, city manager, those are getting allocated within these, but these are the public facing, you know, this is why we do what we do for, you know, the, the public services. And how much of this tax, property tax increase, um, how much is changing for each department? And so one of the big things that I've gone back and put an asterisk and, uh, note because it, I think what'll jump out to you is that Parks and Recreation is going up a lot and Public Works is going down a lot. And that again, is just another way where that shift of the park maintenance division from Public Works to Parks and Recreation is impacting this, just, um, a different way of how we're managing that. And then again, um, same slide that we looked at before, but also with a, I just a little footnote there too, where we're breaking it out by, uh, salaries, internal charges, material supplies and services and debt. And I think I mentioned before a lot, you know, salaries and benefits is a big part of the city's budget, just by the nature of who we are and what we do. And, um, just wanted to point out that that five point three percent does not mean that everyone's getting a five point three percent salary increase. That, um, along with the pay increases, it also has some proposed additional staffing as well as, um, changes for benefits. And then this is, uh, another slide that wasn't there here before, just another way to try to, uh, analyze this is this again is the tax, the proposed tax levy increase changing from twenty-three. And that first, the current level services, that's sort of like looking at a, a bait, like the base budget with the staffing that we had, internal service charges and just what that would look like. And that's a six point two percent increase. And then with the new staff we're proposing, most of that is the firefighters. Um, and then the new operating expense, that's not necessarily new things that we're doing, but it's, um, when the, when the departments are putting in their budget requests, like what things are costing as far as, um, the requests that they're putting in, that's not already preloaded for salaries and benefits or for like internal, um, charges. And then again, that debt service amount making up the difference. So my, um, last slide here. I'm just gonna show the budget calendar. Um, so here we are in, uh, September at the preliminary levy. And so as I just mentioned a little bit earlier, things that are gonna be coming up is we're gonna have a lot, not me talking, it's gonna be, you're gonna be hearing directly from the departments and diving into their budgets. So, um, October ninth, police and fire will be presenting. October sixteenth, Parks and Recreation, Public Works and Community Services will be presenting. And that will also be the night we'll, we'll present, uh, proposals for utility rate, rates for twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, we have planned for October thirtieth, um, Lori Economy Shuler, she'll be going over the CIP as well as, uh, have a chance to have a discussion about the Strategic Priorities Fund. And then November thirteenth will be the IT Department, Community Development, and Legal, uh, presenting their budgets. And then that'll bring us to November twentieth, which is again a special budget meeting, um, where you'll be kind of focused in on where you want that final twenty twenty-four tax levian budget. And then December fourth is the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing that will be noticed. So that is the end of my slides.
Thank you very much. Council questions, comments? Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Ms.-
I talked you into it by looking at you long enough, didn't I?
No, I, I'm always impressed when, uh, when Kari, you come up here and give us the information because it's, it's a lot and I know that there's just reams and reams of data underneath the stuff that you present to us that you probably have in your brain. We could never do that and that's, uh, that's a kudos to you on that. Could, what I, uh, I did have a, I wanted to go back to, um, the two, I, I appreciated that you sent, uh, you, you showed those two ways of looking at the, the budget data. The first one, I think, was, um, more on at a department level and then the second one was on kind of like continuation of services versus new ad. So, um, yeah, you could leave it here for now. So a couple of questions here. You, you said that the majority of that new staff is our firefighters. Can you give me an approximate understanding? Is it eighty percent? Is it fifty percent?
It's, um, like ninety percent, eighty percent, yeah.
Yeah, okay, north of seventy-five.
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, that's helpful. So, um, are, if you could give me maybe a, a, an example of the new operating expense line items here, um, to understand. So maintaining a current level of service implies that, um, we can continue to do things exactly as we're doing them. But the way that you described new operating expense, it made it sound like, like stuff's costing more. So maybe if we didn't do them, we wouldn't be able to maintain our current level of service. So I just want to make sure I understand if, if you have a, a good example you can give me to kind of articulate what the difference between it, maintaining a current level of service versus these new operating expenses.
Yes, Mayor, council members, Councilmember Delisandro, that, that is a very good point. That is, it, it is the same level of service, but with, just because of what things cost, increased costs. So the way our general ledger and budget is structured, I don't have a, an easy way of, um, breaking that out from all of the proposals. So we were just trying to, based on how everything is submitted for the budget, it was, it's easy to break out the salaries, what the salaries and benefits cost and the internal allocations and, and segregate that. And it's easy to segregate the new staff adds. It's, um, and then I'm able to take, we call them the discretionary budget amounts and that's really the only amounts that the, um, that the departments can, um, you know, request or add to or change. And so that's that by itself. So within there is maybe a little both, like there might be some things in there where they're requesting of, some new services or, uh, maybe a, a study that they would like to do. This is, um, you know, and just in the general fund. But then a, a lot of it is also just the utility costs are going up or the cost of salt is increasing or things like that. So we can maybe try to break that up a little bit more, but, um, as far as an easy way to, to extract that out and present it.
Yeah.
That's how we've got it here. So it's kind of our first try of trying to do it like this.
Sure. No, I, I think it's a really interesting way of looking at it. So it, you know, at a very first blush, I would say, okay, what you're telling me here is in order to maintain the current level of service that we have, we need to add, we need to, we need to get six point two percent more dollars in there because of stuff costing more, right? Or whatever it is. And I, and I get that. So that's easy. And I, you know, new staff, we can talk about what those are, but ninety percent is, or so are firefighters. We knew that was coming. It, it's in that one point five nine percent that I'd really love a little bit more detail because what I care about is, I talk to, when I talk to our residents, oftentimes what I say to them is, I know, no, nobody likes to be charged tax levy. Like I'm a homeowner, I don't like it either, right? Okay, but if we're going to do it, are we sure that we're doing it against the things that our residents have told us are the priorities? So when I look at that one point five nine percent, I want to know that in order, like you've mentioned, you know, public safety, Parks and Rec, and, you know, public services or whatever we called it, fin, uh, infrastructure, those are the three big ones. Against that, I would expect to see that being the lion's share of those new operating expenses because that's in alignment with our str, with the priorities that our residents have shared with us. I don't know if we can get there, but if we could get there, I think that would be a really helpful way for me to under- I don't know if we can get there, but if we could get there, I think that would be a really helpful way for me to understand that number. Because I don't, I don't want it to be something different than those things unless we have talked about it up here as a council. And we can say, yeah, we, we've heard what you said, residents, but we think that this is also important, and so we're gonna fund this anyway, even though it didn't show up on your radar as a strategic priority for you as as a resident. That's a harder conversation to have, but I'd like to have that eyes wide open, I guess, is. So I don't know if I'm asking for too much, but if that one point one million can kind of get broken down against your, your, your buckets from your, from your your community conversations to understand what that would be, I think it'd be a really helpful way to look at that.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, we can do, we can definitely do that. And it might also be part of our in-depth department presentations as well. So we're doing each of those departments, we can share that too, what part of that is theirs.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Council addition questions, comments? Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, if we could go back to slide fifteen.
I can't see the numbers, or wait, yes, I can.
It's the slide where you looked at residential assessment review area. Yeah, that one right there. So with with this one here, I know that Councilmember Nelson and I kind of had a similar question with regard to this. And the thing that, I just want to be sure that I understand this right. So for that quadrant there, are we just looking at the median income, so like that nine point one over there? Because what I'm really interested in, and I don't know if there's a way to even do this, is when you get down back behind the median income folks, because when you get into that, if let's say we, we took the, you know, the first quartile of people, you know, that's where we saw the biggest increases. And that was not shown in our last, when we did our last levy increase. And that was what I kept hearing when I was knocking on the doors, hey, you know, I know you're talking about this median income increase, but my, you know, stuff is going up twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you know, twenty percent, and it's just not reflected here. And so I just wanted to understand the impact, not that it's gonna change, you know, what this body does for those folks, because there's not much we can do with, with, you know, having a, you know, having this, the style of taxation that we have. But I just think it's more indicative of what, what, what they're going to experience as their. And so I don't know if that's even possible to do that. I know that's why we stick with the median, and every time we get off that median, i- it can be a, it can be a really crazy exercise. So I'm not looking for a big, huge thing, but if there was maybe, we could take maybe just one of these segments and just look at a few, like a scattered plot of a couple of, you know, different folks that are median income falls below that, that number to see what their impact would be, or what they've experienced in the past. Does that make any sense what I'm asking here?
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, we can do that.
Okay, is it just, I think it's, it is just a little easier for for folks to have a better understanding of of what, what that impact may be, you know, that we we have the median, we have above that, you're gonna, you know, people are gonna experience things that are higher than that and that kind of thing. But I just think it's a, you know, that we have, at least have that, that look to kind of see as we're looking at this.
Councilmember DeLisandro, you have a question?
I have a clarification request for Councilmember Lohman. You've said median income, but this is medium home value, so this is property value, not income.
Yeah, sorry, I think, I think we're talking the same thing here. I I said the wrong thing, sorry, I'm very tired with the new baby, so.
No, I just, I wanted to be sure, because I actually, I don't disagree that that's a good idea. But I wanted to be sure that we were talking about the same numbers, that's all.
Yeah, I think we're talking the same numbers, right, where you understood me to, even though I didn't say that, you understand that, right? What I'm asking?
Yes, yes, I was assuming you wanted the median value, the lower.
There you go, yeah.
And the median value home, some scattered lower value homes in those areas across the city. What kind of impact this tax levy increase would have on those homes?
Yeah, and maybe there's nothing, maybe it's bigger, I don't know, I'd just be interested to see that. And I have one other question for you. I know in two thousand and twenty-three, we did do an increase for the police department because we looked at across multiple jurisdictions to see that we are, you know, falling behind in our ranks with how many police officers that we have. And I noticed that for this year, we don't have any increase to that, that group as a part of the request. And I was curious why there isn't an increase to to keep with, you know, keep up with that or increase the ranks of our, our police department.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, so I haven't highlighted out the, you know, we have budgeted increases, kind of forecasted increases for salaries and benefits across the city. And police are, have three different unions within their department. So they're in contract negotiations, but for the twenty-four contract. But I haven't broken out what we've budgeted, you know, specifically. As far as any of the information, it's all part of like the salaries all grouped together.
Okay, so, so there is new officers being proposed for two thousand and twenty-four?
There's, oh, I'm sorry, no, there's, we don't have new police officers in this budget.
And that's the question I have, maybe it's not for you, maybe it's for manager question. I'm not sure if the manager is still even, is he still around or has he gone?
And I think the, Mr. Verbrugge can jump on here, but I think the general answer is that after adding four last year, four new officers last year for the first time in a decade to add officers to the Bloomingdale Police Department, the, I think the assumption and the understanding was they've, they've forced up for a while, they've got the, they're, they're looking now at dispatchers to increase the efficiency of what they've got there. But my understanding is that with, that's what Chief Hodges is looking at now in terms of full, full, full force for now. Whether that changes in the future, that could be, you know, there could be an additional request. But the way he brought forward the budget request to the, to the city manager, that's what, he was where he needed to be at this time.
Okay, so that's, that's really.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, if I may jump in. Mayor's summary is, is accurate. I would say that we are looking at some different police staffing options that we'll be discussing when we have the police and fire budget conversation with the city council in October. But the, the staffing options that we're looking at are likely ones that are going to not affect the levy and will relate to the public safety funding that is coming from the state of Minnesota and possibly some other sources. So we can discuss the, the staffing issues when we have that budget come through.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, I know that from the conversation that we had last year and when the, the chief, I hadn't heard that there had been a change in that. So that's why I was concerned that I didn't see any increase, that, you know, that something had changed. You know, what had happened with that, and I appreciate the mayor and the managers that they were gonna try to get at that in a different way, which I certainly appreciate that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be along the same lines, and maybe this is what you were answering before. But so if you go to slide eighteen, so you have the tax levy increase by department. And so with police, it's a, the percent change from two thousand and twenty-three is two point five percent, two point five six percent. Fires, two point one. So fire, we're hiring six positions, I understand that, and for police, there was one dispatcher. But that's, it's kind of, it, it just kind of jumps out to me as a pretty substantial increase with one new staff. Like a bigger increase than fire is seeing with six new staff. So I don't know if you could have the information to be able to talk through that increase of, like, what does that actually mean? Like, what does that entail?
So Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I can dig into that to get some more details on there, but just thinking through what is in that police budget. The police department is one of the, the departments that have a lot of employees. So just the amount, so it's not that it's necessarily a two point five six percent increase overall in the police budget, but like taking the amount, because not everything in the general fund is funded by property taxes. But, but even just the salary increase for the existing staff that they have, it's a significant amount in the budget. So that's what I believe is driving that, but I can get the details of that, yes.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions?
I just wanted, looking at the, the other staffing increase, the, in the park department, park and rec. And I know that two of the movements from part-time to full-time, they're, they're cost neutral based on cost reductions. And I, I think in, in doing a little digging and having conversations, I understand that the other new position is actually an add-back from a position that was cut back in two thousand and twenty-one or so. And it was something we had said in the past, that we weren't simply, in the most case, most cases, we weren't just adding back staff that we had cut during the, the austere times of during the pandemic, we weren't simply doing that. But in this case, we are, and it's specifically for programming at Creekside Community Center for, for senior programming. And again, as we talk about a budget that reflects the values and the priorities of this community, programming, staffing, doing what we can for our seniors at Creekside Community Center kind of fits that bill very nicely. And I, and I understand because people may point and say, no, you said, you've said all along that you weren't simply adding back staff that you cut back in two thousand and twenty. In this case, we are, but it's for a specific need, and it's for the need at Creekside Community Center for our, our senior programming there. Did I summarize that correctly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will also add that making that position full-time allows parks and recreation to be able to offer more programming that was identified in the park system master plan as areas of improvement that they heard. So this is in a response to that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, to that, that point, I'm curious about the part-time, full-time. My understanding was that in, in past years, I thought we had made a change where we made healthcare available to part-time employees. Is that, that's something that, did that happen? Is that ongoing? Is that available to all of our part-time employees? Does that have any impact at all to these moves or other moves that may be made in the, in the future?
So Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, for part-time employees, they do not have health insurance unless they work over a certain number of hours and required to offer health insurance. So there's only a couple that fit that. What we have changed in more recent years is offering paid time off for part-time employees. So that, that, that was a benefit that was added. We see that in the accrued benefits fund where we have to accrue the paid time off. Part of that now is growing because all of part-time employees do, are able to accrue time and have paid time off.
So what's the cutoff that we have for, is, is it have to do with the Affordable Care Act when the cutoff is for that? So if you're beneath that, then we don't have to cover you. Is, is that what we're seeing other cities are doing in this, this kind of environment too as well? Is, is kind of sticking to that? Because I know there's a significant impact to the levy if we say, hey, we're gonna provide healthcare for employees, so I'm not. And I, I thank you for reminding me it was PTO, I couldn't remember what the benefit was that we had provided for folks. Is that?
Mayor, members, Councilmember Lohman, that is something I will need to research with our HR department.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, for the, you're, you're right about the Affordable Care Act, that any employee working thirty hours or more on a consistent basis has to be offered insurance. And that's the, it's the practice that we have as well.
And, and given that we've, we've talked about equity inclusion, I, I am curious about the demographics of, of those folks that fall underneath, that, you know, are not provided that and what those look like. I'm just curious to see what, you know, what the age, you know, what the, the makeup of those folks, if that's, if that's something we could, we could see as a breakout.
And I'm curious about that as well, councilmember, but I think we need to focus a bit here on the, on, on the levy and the budget. And I understand this, it does have levy and budget implications, I understand.
Thank you, I don't want, because I, I'm gonna take you to task on that if you say there's not.
I don't necessarily, I, I think that's, that's a broader discussion than what we're having.
Yeah, and I, the reason why, the only reason why I asked that question is, you know, based on what, what you said about, you know, this idea, this paradigm around, you know, the equity piece of it that you asked earlier. So as a part of this, this piece, that's the only reason why I asked that question. So I just wanted to get more clarity on that piece. So I'm, I'm finally leaving it right there, something for two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter, and then we'll get to our public hearing on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Last time when we had kind of our preliminary discussion, Mr. Verbrugge shared what he was hearing other cities were coming in at for their preliminary levy. But I think they, it was very preliminary, and so I guess I'm curious if he has any updated information on where other cities are at. I know cities across the metro, and I'm sure the state are dealing with similar issues that we're dealing with and, and seeing kind of these historically high levy numbers. And so I'm curious if there's any update to those.
I think that's a good question, Councilmember Carter. And looking at this, this is a useful chart here about the final property tax comparison of the median value homes per month. But I think, yes, specifically what the percentage increases for each of these cities is or, or is proposed to be would be helpful as well. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have that information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter. Unless Kari was able to do some quick research in the last couple of days, all of the cities are certifying their preliminary levy amounts right about the same time we are, last week and this week. And so we don't have what their certified number is and probably won't have that until the end of this month. We'll certainly share it with the council as we go through the budget process. I have not heard from any of my colleagues that they are adjusting the numbers differently than what I shared previously.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Ms. Carlson, is there anything else in the presentation?
No, Mayor, councilmembers, that's all I had, just to say this, it's actually not a public hearing tonight. We'll just do, we'll do the public hearing on December fourth for the truth and taxation. But this is just the council setting the preliminary levy in.
My mistake, thank you for the correction of that. It is not a, a public hearing tonight, it is just the motion to approve the two items, the preliminary tax levy and the general fund budget, and then we'll have the public hearing at another time. Council, any additional discussion? If not, council, I would look for action on item four point one, the resolution adopting the preliminary two thousand and twenty-four tax levy.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
So, Mr. Mayor, is there, I'd, I'd like to just get, have a discussion about whether or not we think that number is the right number to start with, if that's okay, just because of where we're at. And I asked that question largely because of that one point five percent that's, that's kind of out there that I don't know anything about, and I feel a little like I'm not sure what we're adding to that pile. So I, I, you know, I, my, my initial thought about a preliminary levy number is like, it could be fifty thousand for all I care because it's a maximum, and therefore we could do what we need to do in truth and taxation, right? So I'm not super wedded to making a case for it, except to, to kind of say like, we as a council are uncomfortable with that number being even on the table. And so I don't know where other folks are at with it. You know, I, I know last, last year when we did this, we started at a really big number, and it came down twice or three times even by the time we were passing the levy. If I remember, it was in the elevens, and then by the time we did it, it was nine, right, something like that. So I assume that we're gonna probably try to bring this down, I would certainly hope that we do. There's an open question in my mind about whether or not we should set something tonight that is indicative of where we all have a tolerance for a maximum. And this one's a little high for me, I, I just think we should show residents and we should help residents understand that we are, we are, we are continuing to work to provide the most efficient set of services that we can. And it's been hard on everyone. There are lots of folks in our, in our neighborhoods who struggle, you know, to support their families. And we're trying all kinds of ideas. And one of them would be that we, you know, force an issue where it's like, hey, some of this stuff that you want to do that's maybe newer or more experimental or should be something that we, you know, do now, but move into our budget over time or whatever. Those things should be maybe funded with grants or other mechanisms as opposed to through the property tax. I just don't know if that one point five nine percent there is, is related to stuff that's aligned with our strategic priority at this point. And that's what makes me uncomfortable about saying, go ahead and put it in there. So I'm not. So I'm not suggesting necessarily that we come back with what I, 1.5, 7.99 is the maximum number. That's not what I'm saying. But I'm wondering if we should make a consideration here that this number's a little lower as a starting point. And I'm thinking like 9%, 8.5%.
I think you might be doing the math just a bit wrong. So even-
Awesome. Great. I love that when I do that.
Even if we were to limit that entire line item of new operating expense, that $1.1 million, that would not, that would lower the levy by-
A point, a point and a half, right?
Not, I don't think even a point and a half.
I thought 650,000 was about a-
Maybe that's about right, yeah.
Kurt, can you put that slide back up?
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, you're asking about the new operating-
Yep.
In the direction, Cory. It's one.
One more. There you go. Yes, correct. The math I was doing was to say, like, if we, if we really truly were trying to maintain, you know, essentially what we have, understanding that we need to fund those new firefighters, et cetera, would we be able to say, without that 1.59%, we would be more in the 7.99 number for the levy? Because I believe that 9.49% is our levy increase number. So I was taking that 1.5% out of that number is what I was doing. So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if that's the right math, but that was an open question, really.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know what's in that number, so I'm hesitant to just say, yeah, sure, go ahead with that number. But also, I understand some of it will probably be there, which is why I'm maybe putting on the table maybe 9% as a number. I don't know. I'm throwing out something for discussion, if you will.
Counsel, discussion? Councilmember what?
Thank you, Mayor. I think in that same vein, Councilmember Alessandro, I would be hesitant because we don't know what's in that number, to drop it down, and then tie our hands to be able to meet the strategic priorities that the residents of Bloomington would want. This is not a number that I'm comfortable with, but I truly believe it's a number we can work on. And it's not what we saw a few years back when we were in the elevens, double digits. And so kind of along the same vein, I'm just taking the other approach to it.
Other opinions on that? Other thoughts? Councilmember Loman?
I kind of like the idea. We'll put our staff on the hot seat tonight, and see what we can trim off, you know, if we could trim it down to nine, or, you know, down to eight, you know, figure out what that means. Because the question I have, when I looked at this, is, gosh, you know, 6.2 plus the one, that gets you 7.26. What would happen if we lopped that, you know? What's the impact there? You know, I heard you say something about the salt fee increasing. So then, how would we cover that salt increase if it was locked off at the, you know, at the 7.26, let's say? I mean, so I'm trying to figure out what's in that number, and what the impact would be to services if we lopped that piece off. But no, I'm-
Councilmembers, rather than going the route of putting staff on the hot seat at this moment and try to figure out what numbers should be, my recommendation would be to pass the 9.49, and then the discussions that we're going to have over the next six weeks, where we're going to see detailed budget presentations from each of the departments, that's the time, that's the opportunity to say, there might be an opportunity to reduce some funding. There might be an opportunity to do cuts there. But to stand here without knowing what that number is, one way or another, and to say, nope, take that out, and we'll work around it, we'll figure a way around it, I think would be irresponsible. As we learn more about it and we decide we don't like it, that's a possibility. But to do it without more information, without having those detailed budget presentations by the different departments here at the city, I think that's not the way to go. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with you. I would ask, when staff bring back the department budgets and we have those thorough conversations, you know, I would be interested to know, you know, what has been considered on the list of, maybe we just need to stop doing these things? How do we work more efficiently in some areas? Are there other options for the way we administer services that might be cheaper or less expensive, but not compromise quality? And then what are other potential revenue streams that have been considered? I think that we often talk about like what's coming off the list, and I know that staff are having those conversations, but we don't always hear them. And I do think it's important, when we have a second year in a row with a pretty high levy, for our community to understand that, you know, staff is being diligent, they're looking for ways to curb costs at every angle. And so I also believe that we can't cut our way to a lower budget. So I'm thinking through the revenue streams and different ways of administering services. And again, maybe it's staff does the analysis, and there really aren't a lot of options, and it is what it is. But just to know that the conversations are happening for our sake and for the community's sake.
Councilmember Loman?
You know, and to, you know, basically what Mua, Councilmember Mua has brought forward, I'm curious about what 20, you know, 2025, you know, those out years. So for example, we have these new firefighters. You know, where are we building that in, that we make the transition? You know, what impact is that going to have on future years? So what isn't in here that's in the future that we should be thinking about as a policymaking body, that would make us say, hey, maybe we ought to keep it at 9.49, let's reserve those dollars so that we can be able to spend those dollars in the future? You know, and that's the way I would look at this, in the same way if we're going to look at that. So I'm perfectly fine going with 9.49 tonight, but I'd also like to look at the future stuff so that we don't get hit in the future years with, you know, additional, you know, department changes, other types of things that are going to happen in the, and, you know, we've got this thing artificially low for this year, because we're, you know, our names happen to be on the ballot, so we want to keep it low this year, and then next year, we're going to raise it. So just a thought, so.
So counsel, additional thoughts? Are we comfortable moving forward with the 9.49, understanding that the staff is going to come back with some detailed budget presentations? Going to continue to take out the sharp pencils, as they always do. And if we see things in those budget presentations that we would consider to be opportunities for reductions in this levy, that we'd bring them forward, and we'd have that discussion at that time. People comfortable with that? Councilmember Loman?
If that's the case, I'm happy to go ahead and move this resolution here.
Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I move to a resolution establishing the preliminary 2024 tax levy increase of 9.49%.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the resolution establishing the preliminary 2024 tax levy increase of 9.49%. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item 4.2, which goes hand in hand with that, is of course the preliminary 2024 general fund budget. Councilmember Loman?
Be happy to move that. I move to establish a preliminary 2024 general fund budget utilizing the 9.49 levy increase.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the resolution establishing preliminary 2024 general fund budget utilizing the 9.49 levy increase. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. We'll be seeing a lot more of you, I know, in the next six weeks or so.
Yes.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Up next are a series of public hearings regarding our assessments, and this is an annual thing that we do. And I think if, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe we're going to have the presentation, and then we'll have the individual public hearings on each of these items, and we'll work our way through them one by one. Is that correct?
Yep.
Very good.
That is correct. And I am Amy Sebick. I'm also the other deputy finance officer in the finance department, standing in for Lori tonight, who's joining us on the phone, so. So, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As the mayor mentioned, I will begin with a general overview for each of these five types of assessments. And then at the end, there will be motions for each separate one. So this slide reflects the timeline of the requirements of the assessment process. The legal notice was published in the Sun Current, as you can see, on August 24th, and then a week later, the administrative hearing took place, where four property owners attended the hearing, and those were all for civil fines. Here are the five categories of assessments. They have remained the same from past years. Public nuisance, tree removal, weed and brush removal, delinquent utilities, and civil fines are the five types. Now, keep in mind, on the graphs in the next few slides, those, these numbers actually reflect the amounts as of the date of the Sun Current publication. So they continue to be paid off and, you know, continue to decrease over time. But at this, the graphs were created based on that point in time with the Sun Current publication amounts. The assessment totals for the last five years are reflected on this graph, excluding delinquent utilities, just simply because, given their large dollar amount, the graph would be unreadable. As you will notice, the tree removal amounts have grown significantly in the last couple of years. And of course, this reflects the impact of Emerald Ash Bore on trees in our community. Delinquent utilities are reflected on this graph, unlike the previous one, and shows the number of properties being assessed for utilities has grown slightly over the past three years. The number of properties are primarily residential, with only 16 commercial properties being assessed this year. Public nuisance assessments have stayed within the same range for the past five years. And all 17 of these tree removal assessments qualify for the new program adopted this year, in which the assessment can be paid over three, five, or 10 years. These 17 assessments happen to qualify for the three-year assessment plan, based on their amounts, which were all below $3,000. Weed and brush removal assessments have also stayed somewhat consistent. The amount of delinquent utilities has risen in the last three years, and in a higher ratio than the rise in properties impacted. This can be attributed to a rise in utility rates, and then also the additional charges for the organics program. This map is reflecting utilities, and it's showing that every census tract in Bloomington has some properties located within it that are being assessed for utilities. Lastly, the civil fines have fluctuated slightly in the last five years. It's reflected on this graph. And that's the end of my slides. Is there any questions? If not, we will move on to the public hearing section.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on any of the slides we saw? Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More so a question, you mentioned with the tree removals that we have some folks taking advantage of the, were they proactive about those? Because I know we changed recently the ability for folks to have that assessed on their property in a more proactive way, as opposed to some of these which are assessed because there's delinquency over a period of time, right? So those 17 properties that took advantage of that, was that like a proactive discussion with them about using that new feature that we have?
Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, I was not actually involved in that process, but I do have like the information that was provided to me that had been, had been shared with individuals as they were assessed for those tree removals. And so whether it was them reaching out initially, or due to the information that they were provided from the city, I'm not sure in each situation, but it can certainly reach out.
That's okay. I just was kind of curious, because that's a fairly new development for us. If that caught on like it did, that would be great, right? Because part of what we were trying to do is help make it possible for people to afford to do this kind of work over time. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Let us move into the public hearings. So at this time, with the information that we have just heard, I will call item 4.3 on the agenda. This is our public hearing regarding a public nuisance abatement assessment. Anyone here in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.3, the public hearing on the public nuisance abatement assessment? Mr. Brillett, is there anyone on the phone?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. I'll have to close the presentation to see if there is. We do not have anyone on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Counsel seeing no one coming forward, no one on the phone looking to speak to item 4.3. I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Loman, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further counsel discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Counsel, any further discussion on item 4.3? If not, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for the public nuisance abatements.
Counsel can do it. I thought you were going to take it. All right. I'll move to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment roles for public nuisance abatements.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Martin, to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for public nuisance abatements. No further counsel discussion. All those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Can we move to the next one?
Next on the agenda, I'll call item 4.4. This is a public hearing regarding the tree removal assessments. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.4? Mr. Brillett, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.4 this evening?
Mayor, no one on the phone for this item.
Last call for the public hearing on item 4.4 here in the council chambers? Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.4. I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Carter, to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further counsel discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Counsel, I look for a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent tree removal costs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Carter, to adopt the resolution adopting the reassessment role for delinquent tree removal costs. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I'll call the public hearing for item number 4.5 on tonight's agenda. This is regarding weed and brush removal assessments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.5 this evening? Mr. Brillett, anyone on the phone yet?
Mayor, no one on the phone.
Last call? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the council chambers. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.5 weed and brush removal assessments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Alessandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to close the public hearing on item 4.5. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Counsel, I look for a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment role for weed and brush removal costs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman, to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for weed and brush removal costs. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item 4.6 on our agenda, this too is a public hearing regarding delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage recycling, and organics assessments. I will open the public hearing now and see if there's anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.6. Mr. Brillett, is there anyone on the phone?
Mayor, still no one on the phone.
Last call on item 4.6? Counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.6 with no one coming forward in the chambers and no one on the phone.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Alessandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.6. hearing on item 4.6. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Counsel, I would look for a resolution, look for a resolution to adopt the assessment role for delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics assessments.
So moved.
Question, councilmember DeLaSandro?
Yeah, before we move it, if that's okay, sorry.
It would be fine, thank you.
I appreciate you were on your roll. That was great.
I was on the roll.
Totally. So I had a couple of quick questions about this one. Number, number one, it's huge. Like, it's always big. And I am concerned that there are underlying financial burdens on residents that we aren't necessarily trying to support here. And I don't mean that as a, as like, we're not doing our jobs. I just mean that like, usually when you see this kind of swell of like, challenges, of course, there's always people who are like, no, I'll just assess it. I'd rather spend my bills that way, or whatever. That's fine. But there could be true hardship here, and I'm curious. We, we've asked a number of times about, you know, innovations in areas around utility billing, right? I think one of the ideas that I've mentioned before here myself, others have mentioned it, but, but, you know, can we, can we find a way to go to every other week billing for, or every other week pick up for garbage for certain folks? I had, there was a crazy idea I had at one point that I talked with city manager about, that the staff was maybe even looking into, which was, could I round up my bill and like, use that to offset somebody's bill who can't afford it, right? I love that idea. That's a really community-oriented idea. You know, my two extra bucks, because I, you know, it's 118 for me, 120, maybe that's not a burden for me, but maybe that $2 could go towards somebody's abatement. Maybe somebody who does not want to pay for organics would actually use it if we could help them, or whatever. So I'm just curious if, if we are, between now and 2024 budget cycle, are we going to get information about this as part of what is coming back to us? Because we've been asking it for, asking it for, for a while, and it sits, this is the largest thing that is delinquent in our, in our budget. And so I'm just, you know, part of, part of a way to make budgets work better is actually get your bills paid on time, which includes revenue for us as, on time, right? Every dollar that this isn't in there is not being, we're not getting interest on it, we're not, you know. So I'm just wondering if, and I don't know if Jamie, if the city manager has anything on it, but I'd love to know if we've got some innovations coming in with the, with the discussion around utility billing in the budget cycle for 2024.
And I appreciate that, councilmember DeLaSandro. And I think it is a discussion worth having, I really do. I will say, just shooting from the hip and without specifics, I think the lion's share of that number that you see is water. It is not organics collection. It's not recycling. It's water. And that, that's the largest portion, I think, that makes up this bill. And so then it becomes a matter of the equity of charging for water. I mean, the equity and the, and the appropriateness of charging for water, but then it doubles back to, we have got a lot of water infrastructure that we gotta pay for. And so, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a complex issue, and it's a complex conversation that we have, but I do think it's worth at least thinking about different ways that we could possibly approach it. So, Mr. Verbrugge, any additional thoughts on that?
And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember DeLaSandro. Mayor is correct. The good portion of that is in our water utility. And we have not lost the idea, councilmember DeLaSandro, of the roundup. Our, our folks in finance have had a lot of transition this year. We just haven't had the staffing bandwidth to study that. So we can make sure that we're incorporating into the future work plan. I know that our CFO is, still has it on the radar screen. And then finally, the, the idea about the every other week, or some of those other approaches, is, I think, going to be factored into the rate study that's going on currently.
Any other questions, councilmember?
Oh, with that, I can make the motion if you'd like.
I, I think there was a motion. I think councilmember Muah did make the motion.
Okay, we were in discussion.
Yep, and we were in the discussion. So it was appropriate. Did we get a second?
I can second it.
I think councilmember DeLaSandro did second it.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Additional questions on this one? Additional discussion? Very good. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent water, sewer, stormwater drainage, garbage, recycling, and organics assessments. No further council discussion on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And the final one in our series here, this is a public hearing on item 4.7, I will call right now. This is a public hearing for civil fines for property-related violation assessments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.7 this evening? Mr. Brillert, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, nobody on the phone for this one.
No one coming forward and no one on the phone. Counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Martin, second by councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item 4.7. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And counsel, I would look for a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid civil penalties and fines.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Martin, second by councilmember Muah to adopt the resolution adopting the assessment role for unpaid civil penalties and fines. Counsel, discussion on this? Hearing none. Counsel, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you, Ms. Ewing, for setting us up with this and getting us through this. Counsel, thanks for working our way through that. And councilmember DeLaSandro, your questions are duly noted, and we'll work that, make sure we bring that back to the staff one more time. We'll move on to item 4.8 on our agenda, so I can catch my breath and get a drink of water here. This is another public hearing. This is regarding the Lyndale Avenue properties rezoning from B2 to B4. We've got Mr. Thomas Ramler Olsen from our planning department here. Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you, members, mayor, members of the city council. Let me share my screen. Oh, perfect. Okay, that worked. All right. Yes, so the item before you is the proposed Lyndale B4 rezonings. And that proposal consists of rezoning a total of 28 parcels near the Lyndale Avenue intersections with 86th Street and 98th Street. That's from B2 to B4. If you recall, we discussed this, or this was brought as a study session on July 10th, and with, and at that meeting, a resolution to initiate the rezoning process was adopted by, by council on that date. And this is a, is a public hearing to continue that discussion. These are the parcels under consideration. You'll see on the left is the 86th Street node. That node is defined in the Lyndale Avenue Suburban retrofit plan that was adopted in April of 2021. And on the right is the 98th Street node. So all the parcels being considered are concentrated around those two intersections. This is the land use for both areas. You'll see the general business is the guided land use for those parcels around 86th and Lyndale. And then for 98th Street node, it's a community commercial. Both guided land uses are, are, sorry, are, are fine with, with the B4 zoning. Sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought. But anyways, there's no need, staff's interpretation that there's no need to re-guide those, those properties proposed for rezoning. And that zoning is shown on this slide. You'll notice around the 80th Street, the intersection of 86th and Lyndale, the properties on the other side of Lyndale are zone transitional industrial. That was a previous zoning effort that was adopted back in January of this year. That one, that new zoning district transitional industrial also allows residential in, you know, under specific circumstances. And so really, this effort is trying to mirror that, that initiative on both sides of Lyndale in furtherance of the suburban retrofit plan. Here's a table comparing the two zoning districts from B2 to B4. I've just highlighted some ones that stand out and that are, that speak to the vision illustrated in the retrofit plan, looking at higher floor area ratio under B4, if there's residential included in the development, moving parking from, prohibiting parking in front of the building, and moving into the side or rear window requirements along buildings, and a maximum actual front yard setback along public streets. So again, all of those kind of continuing or emphasizing the, the design vision in the retrofit plan. What was discussed before, and is still at issue, is, or consideration, is that some lots would become non-conforming with this rezoning, so just trying to keep that in mind. Legal nonconformity is established when all the lot conditions have received all required approvals, but they can continue. So there are some legal, or there will be some legal nonconformities that are created from the rezoning, but they are allowed to continue in their present state, as long as they don't propose expansion, in which case then they would need to be brought into compliance with the B4 zoning district. And here's an illustration of those lots that would not be conforming with under B4. It's, there's four lots around 86th and Lyndale, and one lot near the 98th Street node. There's, the engagement for this process took, or kicked off in early May. We sent letters, mailers, describing the project and how to engage with staff planners about the project, to all the property owners, the owners of the lots under consideration. We also gave them a heads up that we would be visiting their property to make ourselves available to answer any questions and address any concerns they might have with the proposed rezonings. So we did visit those properties. We visited not only the properties, but each business, if there were multiple tenants in each building. And so we visited each business. We handed them more information, basically a redundancy of what was sent out in early May. And then we also handed out advertisements for the open houses later that month. There were two open houses. Throughout this process, we've received several phone calls and emails. Nothing really expressing objection, or, or, or in opposition, or, or agreement with the proposal, but just more or less inquiring about what are the specifics and what it would mean for their property, essentially. But yeah, that's essentially it. And then there were public hearings, or there was a public hearing at the Public Planning Commission back on August 17th. So that was kind of part, that's, can also be considered part of the engagement process. At that meeting, there, you know, there were some concerns about legal nonconformities, potential for regarding, guiding parcels, but I addressed that earlier. And what are some of the current land uses of properties under consideration? Staff also brought a matter to the Planning Commission, seeking guidance on perhaps exploring other rezonings along Lyndale Avenue. There's been changing conditions between when the retrofit plan was adopted to now. There's been more opportunities. There's also been some residential development that's been success, or, sorry, I guess some of it is under construction still, but other, another development, Lyndale Flats has been complete, but Oxborough Heights is currently under construction. So we've had some more activity along Lyndale Avenue, and then there's some opportunities for redevelopment that have been, that have appeared since then. And they're currently zoned B2, so we went to the Planning Commission to seek guidance if there was any interest in considering more rezonings beyond what was prescribed in the retrofit plan. And they did, there was, there was consensus to, for staff to explore that. And we also come to you with that same question of what sort of guidance you have for staff to maybe explore additional rezonings. So I mentioned public correspondence. Again, just emails and phone calls asking about the parameters of the proposed rezonings. There was a comment at the public hearing, or at the Planning Commission public hearing, and it was from representatives from Pond America. Their pond shops would be, they're currently allowed, they're conditional use within the B2 zoning district, but they're not, not allowed within B4. As I mentioned earlier, when discussing legal nonconformities, they would be allowed to continue. And there's some, there's some manner in which they could continue, even if they proposed, you know, reconstruction. I mean, there would be, you know, staff would work with them on that, but they wouldn't be allowed to expand. That would result in a larger footprint of their operations. And so they expressed some concern about the impact of rezoning on their property, on their business. They've, there was some expression of difficulty to contribute to the revitalization of Lyndale, something that they were interested in. After that, staff reached out to the, to the representatives from Pond America. We had a conversation with them, address any concerns, and, you know, what, what could they do to, to be part of this revitalization of Lyndale? So they did provide a letter proposing an amendment to the zoning code that was included in the council, council packet, that mentioned, or that proposed a new use within the B4 district. Basically, pond shops in existence at a certain date would be able to be a conditional use within the B4 district. That's what they're proposing. This kind of ties in with the next steps for this, if there, if council wishes to pursue the next steps. So pending council direction, there, there's a, considering amending the B4 use matrix to allow pond shops as a conditional use per the proposed amendment from Pond, the representatives from Pond America. Also, study sessions before Planning Commission, City Council to reconsider, or to consider additional rezonings along Lyndale Avenue. We'd also need to adopt a resolution to initiate those rezonings. And then in furtherance of that, schedule of public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. And then just additional work, we just wanted to note that that would, may include a Lyndale Avenue corridor study. That's not, that's not part of the work plan, but that's something that staff is still observing, and we are meeting regularly to follow the progress of implementing the retro, or the, yeah, the retrofit plan. So there's three recommendations before you tonight. Resolution adopting the, or I'm sorry, sorry, an ordinance adoption, resolution for summary publication of the rezoning. And if you are interested, there's a code, a motion to, for a city-initiated code amendment as requested by Pond America for that code amendment. So, and with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you. So clarify for us once again, if you could, and I think it will help shape the discussion, the difference between the nonconforming use as opposed to a, I'm blanking on the other option for a conditional use. Basically, what, what are the options for the pond shops? If they, if they are not included in the B4 zoning discussion, the zoning change, it'd still be a nonconforming use. They could be there. They couldn't expand. They couldn't rebuild if there was a, a need to rebuild for some reason?
Mayor, they, yeah, so you're right. They would be able to continue within the, the current shape of their operations right now, in perpetuity, as long as they didn't expand their, you know, the footprint of, you know, because that would be considered an expansion of the use, and that would go against nonconformities, that would violate nonconformities. So in which case, they would need to be brought into compliance with the B4 zoning district, and that one, in its current status, wouldn't allow pond shops. But I believe, I don't have the code language off the top of my head. I think there's something about fire-related damage. Anyways, I probably shouldn't get into that if I can't recount the code language exactly. But nonetheless, yeah, so there is some manner in which they can continue with the rezoning as a legal nonconformity. But with the code amendment that they're proposing, they, they could rebuild, they could expand, they could maybe relocate the, the structure on the property to be brought into compliance with B4. And that would allow them to, you know, to, to expand if they, if they chose to with the proposed amendment, but.
And that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Have either expressed, we have two, and have either uh, we have two and have either expressed thoughts or plans to expand, rebuild, do anything different than what they've been doing for the past?
Uh, Mayor, I.
Fifty years?
Oh, uh, Mayor, uh, yeah, so, um, I'm not sure where the other one is located. I know that there is, there are laws and regulations about how many pawn shops can exist per, uh, fifty thousand, uh, in population. So I think it's, it's obviously just two. And then the, the one under consideration along Lyndale Avenue, um, in our meeting, I mean, they're, they're here in attendance tonight. So I'm, I'm guessing that question could be better directed to them, but I, I can't recall them, uh, talking about plans to expand, but, uh, they can probably provide more light.
That, that might be helpful. Okay. Council, additional questions here? Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I had a question just along similar lines. So I appreciated the letter that was sent in from the, um, owners. And they talked a little bit about, you know, really wanting to be part of, um, the revitalization of Lyndale and listed some of the goals, uh, in the letter. And I guess I was just curious if, um, if they were planning on making some of these types of changes that are listed as part of some of the goals on the Lyndale Avenue retrofit. Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of thinking through like, you know, as a legally nonconforming business, it doesn't seem like this change would do harm to them as it currently, like if we pass it as it is currently proposed today, unless they were to expand, which sounds like there still might be avenues to move forward. Um, but to me, it really feels like in their letter, they're, they're getting at that they want to be part of the revitalization efforts. And so I guess I'm just curious what that looks like for them, if they are willing to talk about it.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Carter. I'll, yeah, I'll probably leave that to them to, to, uh, to expand on that. But, um, yeah, they, that's something that was emphasized during our conversations, but I think they probably have a better idea of the specifics.
And we'll, we'll invite them up. Let's exhaust questions here just in general, and then we'll invite, uh, our, our guests up and we'll have that discussion. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, I had one question for, um, for planning, and then I have a separate question, I think that probably will go towards the owner, if that's okay. Um, uh, why did we not include pawn shops as a legal use in B two to begin with?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember DeLisandro, um, Nick, do you have the history on that? Okay, sorry, I'll have to.
That's okay. Sure.
It's going around. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Uh, good to see you again this evening. So the B four zoning district was created in two thousand and six. Um, uh, as with the creation, similar to the process we went through with transitional industrial, uh, when you create a new zoning district, you're going to go through your use table and kind of do an analysis, uh, in terms of what uses are consistent with the purpose and goals uh, of that underlying zoning district and add those uses accordingly, whether it be permitted or conditional uses, uh, accessory uses, et cetera. Uh, my understanding at the time when the B four district was created, uh, was that specifically with respect, uh, to pawn shops, that was a little bit before some of the licensing requirements were updated, uh, for, uh, pawn shops, which now, uh, frankly represents the largest, um, kind of impediment to the expansion of proliferat- proliferation of that use. Uh, in Bloomington related to, as Tom said, uh, the maximum quantity, uh, per the, um, uh, ratio of residents. Um, and so prior to that time, um, uh, I think there was some analysis done just in terms of that while on its face pawn shops, uh, as a use may not be totally inconsistent or out of step with the goals and intent of the B four. Uh, they strictly just wanted to limit, uh, pawn shops to where they existed at that time, which was in the B two zoning district. And so that's why in addition to not just before, uh, we added other commercial zoning districts, the freeway districts, the Cs, uh, and other, uh, commercial zoning districts, they didn't add pawn shops to, uh, any of those districts either. Um, so I don't think it had so much to do with the purpose and intent of B four is, is in so much that they just did not want to increase, um, uh, further expansion of that use.
Okay. So is it a, is it your opinion then that given we have those licensing requirements in place? That it, it, for lack of a better way to put it, does no harm to provide it as a conditional use? Is that essentially what you're saying?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, uh, I want, I mean, I preface everything by that we want to do some analysis and research about pawn shops. Frankly, it's not a use that we have studied in any, uh, close detail, uh, since probably the licensing, uh, updates that were done. Um, so with that caveat to it, uh, on its face, I don't, we don't think that it's inherently, um, inconsistent with the retrofit or with B four. Uh, but saying that we do want to study it, uh, some more, which, which this process would allow for.
Sure. Um, the other comment, flipping that on its head a little bit here is that this is a standalone building. Is there any reason not to just leave it as B two and leave it alone so that we don't have to go through that process?
Let me take a stab at that one. So Mayor, Mayor Councilmember DeLisandro, uh, you know, um, cities do all sorts of, uh, odd things to accommodate, you know, existing business owners and rightfully so. They want to support their local business community and, and do some of those things. But, um, just from a, uh, from a planning perspective, it would make more sense to do an evaluation of, uh, pawn shops in the B four use than it would be to have a spot zone of B two, just from a regulatory complexity standpoint. But they have different intensity, uh, standards. B four does call for higher, uh, minimum floor ratios and some different performance standards. So as properties develop over time, if you have one, uh, parcel that's surrounded by other, uh, regulatory requirements, uh, the built environment is not going to be able to, uh, be uniform and eventually would not be in furtherance of the retrofit's, uh, vision or guiding principles with respect to the performance standards that B two allows for. Uh, and some of those things are the, the parking and the buildings not up at the street and, uh, some of the less intensity that the B two allows for. So just a perspective about that.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yep.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Carter, another one?
Thank you, Mayor. So if we were to direct staff to bring forward, um, a city initiated city code amendment to change the status of pawn shops to the B, in the B four district. And you said that there would be, we, you would need to study it. Is that going to be intensive, time consuming? Like we have a lot of, I, we come up with all kinds of ideas all the time to, you know, throw toward the planning staff. And so I guess I'm just curious if this is, um, going to cause a conversation to reprioritize other issues that we already have prioritized? Or if, is it a pretty minimal ask of planning staff to study this piece around the pawn shops in B four?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Carter, I, I, um, we've met and we've discussed it. Um, it will require just some study, but we also want the public hearing process to play out too. So we're also trying to accommodate that and want to be respectful for people who provide public testimony in opposition or support of, you know, the proposed amendment. So, uh, you know, the, the study component would, I, I don't believe it would be too intense. It's just a matter of, uh, examining what, uh, standards we currently have, uh, imposed upon, uh, pawn shops within the city. How does that, um, how does that, uh, conflict or, uh, further the goals of the, the retrofit plan within that context? But it will also allow, I guess, pawn shops to, or sorry, it'll allow pawn shops to exist in other areas of the city where there's B four. Here's, here's a map right now of all the, uh, areas that are, uh, concentrated areas of, uh, B four parcels. So wherever, um, uh, B four exists, that's where, uh, pawn shop could, could go. So.
But there still could only be two pawn shops in Bloomington.
Uh, correct.
Right. Cause it's one per fifty thousand residents. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. If, if I can just add to that, I concur with, uh, Tom's assessment. I think it's more of a discreet, uh, study. It wouldn't, um, uh, result in a reprioritization of any of our other projects that are currently ongoing. Yep.
Councilmember Loman?
Is that, that law that, that, uh, fifty, you know, fifty thousand, you know, people per pawn shop? Is that a state law or?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember, uh, Loman, not to my knowledge, it's a, uh, it is a local, uh, licensing provision. It might be a model that other cities follow, uh, in terms of that use. I'm not, uh, highly knowledgeable about it. Probably our city clerk and licensing staff are probably the most knowledgeable about that. Um, but it's my understanding that it's a, it's a fraction thereof. So I believe if Bloomington were to grow above one hundred thousand, there would, there would be some ability to, uh, increase a license at that point.
At that point, they'd be able to put another one somewhere else, uh, in the city, or if we were to change those.
Those are all, yeah, yes, Mayor and Councilmember Loman, the, the licensing provisions are within the city code and certainly under your authority and purview, uh, to change those as you deem appropriate.
Also, anything else?
I, I do.
Or planning staff?
Mayor, if I may make one just quick, uh, discreet clarification. So there was a discussion about, um, you know, whether pawn shops could be located in other B four sites. Some of that will be tied with whatever decision the policymakers make in terms of whether you follow the, the discreet recommended or request of Pawn America to, uh, to allow this use as a conditional use, but only in existence prior to that adoption date of the rezoning versus just as a flat, uh, conditional use, um, within the B four zoning district, setting kind of the licensing and the number of them issue aside. Um, if the use was not in existence anywhere else in B four prior to that date, then, um, it's likely that that would not allow any other additional pawn shops in B four regardless. So just to keep an eye on that issue as well.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we have some specific questions for our, our friends here. If, if you want to come forward, if you could, please. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Could identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Brett Switzenberg, um, on behalf of Pawn America and, uh, the property owner as well, who's a affiliated business entity.
Thanks for being here with us tonight, Mr. Switzenberg.
Hey, thanks for having me.
Councilmember Carter, you had specific questions on the, uh, on the possible reuse?
Um, so, uh, I was just reading or skimming through your letter again, and, um, you had referenced the Lyndale Avenue retrofit and that, uh, Pawn America wants to be, you know, more involved in taking steps to, well, I guess I don't know what those steps are. That's what I'm curious about. Um, you listed some of the goals of the retrofit study in the letter. And so, um, just as you're thinking about wanting this change made so that you can do those things, I was just curious if you had a sense right now of, you know, what those changes might be, or if it's just discussions that you all want to have in the future and be able to, to do.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, it's, it's more the latter. So there's no, you know, direct plans to redevelop the property at this point. But, you know, um, given the, the goals are to make the corridor more navigable and to increase development there, whether it's, you know, multifamily with, you know, storefronts on the first floor or something like that, everything moved closer to Lyndale Avenue with the, the setbacks being changed. Uh, we want the ability to, you know, support that redevelopment. Um, and so, you know, specifically with, you know, it's section twenty-one point five oh four of the zoning code defines an expansion of a nonconformity as relocation of the use to a structure, structure or portion of the site not previously occupied by the use. So, you know, one of the goals is to move parking lots to the, to the backs of the property, you know, off of Lyndale Avenue. And to, you know, move, change that setback so the buildings can be closer to the, to the, to the corridor. Um, we wouldn't be able to do that and city council wouldn't be able to approve us to do that, given the current zoning code. And so as a conditional use, it doesn't change, you know, our ability to unilaterally, you know, redevelop the property. It, it keeps that with, with, uh, city council and, uh, but it gives you all the ability to approve that should, you know, a developer come in and want to redevelop the corridor and, um, yeah, we just want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. Uh, thanks for being here today. Um, uh, do you, um, the, the, the property owners, are they involved in the business? You said that they're kind of as a, a, a separate interest or is it, is it, uh, does Pawn America own the building? I guess is my question is, is it an owner occupied building at this time?
Definitely. Just procedural, sorry, Mayor, council members, Councilmember DeLisandro, uh, thanks for the question. Yeah. The, the answer to that is, yeah, Pawn America is essentially tied to the, to the property owner. They're one and the same, just not the same.
Understood.
Yes. Yeah, we effectively own the property as well.
Okay. Um, have you, have you had any, um, have you had any interest in expanding your business? Um, prior to, like it has come before council in, in the past twenty-five years? I think you've been around twenty-five years, you said, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That dates me, and that dates me a bit, but I'm.
Not you personally. I meant the business.
Yeah, right. So, yeah, in, in the past, uh, twenty-five years, I'm not sure if there's been any expansion. Um, currently there's no plan to expand, ex- expand the floor, the floor plan of the building and there, there wouldn't be. There's no talks of that. We wouldn't want to do that. It's just purely, you know, if there was a casualty that knocked down the building or we wanted to redevelop, like we'd be able to maybe, um, seek council's, uh, opinion and blessing and, you know, maybe moving the building to, uh, to, so that it's in compliance with the B four district and, uh, um, you know, based on the current zoning code, we wouldn't be able to do that. So.
I, I appreciate that. So, so to, to sum up, if I can, your request is, is, um, tied more so to the definition of expansion as noted in the statute, as opposed to your interest personally in expanding your business. Is that a fair characterization of what you said?
That is fair. Correct.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you. I think we'll move on to the public hearing now. And if we have additional questions or comments afterward during the discussion, we will, we will call on you again.
Perfect. Appreciate your time. I do want to say I'm appreciative and impressed by the conversations we've been able to have with your city staff, uh, particularly, um, planner Remler Olson and, and, uh, city planning manager, Mark Agard. So thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. So council, thanks for that discussion, but with that I will open the public hearing item four point eight. This is a public hearing regarding the Lyndale Avenue properties rezoning from B two to B four. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to item four point eight tonight? Mr. Briller, anyone on the phone?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's one name I don't recognize. We're going to check in with a Ray Hayhurst. Mr. Hayhurst, you are unmuted if you were looking to speak on this item, uh, four point eight. Never mind.
Last call for anybody here in the chambers? Council, we've got no one in the chambers coming forward and a mistake on the phone. So we're, uh, we have no one coming forward to speak at, uh, this evening's public hearing item four point eight. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on that.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item four point eight. No further public discussion on this. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Public hearing is closed. Council, your thoughts on this? Um, and break it in, let's break this into two different chunks. First of all, the, the rezoning in general, what we think about the rezoning as proposed by staff. And then whether or not we want to direct staff to bring forward the city initiated code amendment was requested by Pawn America. But let's start with the, the rezoning in general. Are there, are there questions? Are there concerns, comments regarding the rezoning proposed as it is? No, I think, uh, we, we had the, a good discussion, I think, during the, the, uh, study session on this, and I think we got some good feedback, uh, back and forth from between council and staff on this. So hearing no council discussion on this. Council, I'd look for, uh, for action. Uh, I'd look for a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning property shown in exhibit A from B two general commercial to B four neighborhood commercial.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt that ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning property shown in exhibit A from B two general commercial to B four neighborhood commercial. No further council, uh, Councilmember Muah, question?
Nope.
No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember, who made the motion? I'm sorry, was it?
I, I will be the motion.
Councilmember, Councilmember Muah, summary publication.
Uh, I would move to, uh, adopt resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance. Um, an ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning properties shown on exhibit A from B two general commercial to B four neighborhood commercial.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Loman for summary publication. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Now, council, question, uh, regarding the possible city initiated code amendment as requested by Pawn America. Thoughts on that? Uh, do we want to move forward with this or do we want to, uh, what do we want to do? Councilmember Loman, question?
I can't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward with that. I mean, I think they've laid out a pretty good case. Uh, you know, I mean, you'd probably have to make a move somewhere else in the city. They want to be a part of it. Why not? But let's, let's do it.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you. Just noting i- in the packet here, I know, obviously we're not bound by historical conversations about kind of pawn shops in the community, but it sounds like there was, um, some purposeful decisions reached in terms of numbers licensing by population. So with, with that in mind, I also think about a lot of the. So with that in mind, I also think about a lot of the community engagement that we did in the Lindale Avenue retrofit exercise, and while, obviously, pawn shops are an economic driver in the community, I don't know that that was necessarily the intention that I heard from residents about saying that these were features that they wanted in the zoning districts that were going to be included along Lindale Avenue. So, again, in this particular case, obviously, business activity and a valued member of the community, but over the long term, when I look at the vision of what I heard from residents to be included in these zones and the purpose of the changes, it was over time to modify the makeup of that part of our community and move it in a direction that was substantially different than what we have there today. So I guess I would be hesitant to move forward with this, but it's my two cents.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your point, councilmember Martin, I feel like, I feel like what, one of the things that Nick said when he was up at the dais was, we could, we could do this in a way that limits it to this property, because it's, forgive me, I'm going to ask you to come forward and help me understand this again. Mr. Johnson, I think that what you were saying was, there's some timing associated with this, right?
Yeah, Mayor, member Alessandro, so if you, within the Pawn America letter, what they're specifically requesting the city to consider is to allow pawn shops in operation as of September 19th, 2023, and that date is very intentional and specific, in so much as that that is the day after the initiation of the rezoning would, you know, take effect upon publication of the paper, but basically the day after the city council action. So by limiting it in that way, even if you allowed pawn shops in B4 in this way, and your population increased, suggesting or considering, you know, the licensing, the existing licensing requirements, additional pawn shops could not proliferate or expand or operate in B4 with this narrow allowance that they're suggesting.
Right. And I don't know if that addresses your concern, but it would be more of a long-term way of preventing additional pawn shops from going into B4 district, and then at the same time enabling the folks at Pawn America to continue business in their current location. I don't know if that's a good compromise to consider, but I wanted to throw that out there.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that, councilmember Alessandro. I think just overall, and obviously going from the 10,000 foot down to specific examples, it gets a little tougher, but just knowing that, at least to what I understood, the purpose of the Lindale Avenue retrofit is looking at the use mix that exists along that corridor, and hearing folks say really high auto-intensity uses like drive-throughs or auto parts stores or medium industrial or pawn shops, folks were looking for a generation from now, a substantially different vision than what currently exists there. And on these individual use basis, again, it's awkward, but I think as changes continue to move forward, just not continuing to make carve-outs for the existing businesses that are there, knowing that if that's, ends up being the rule, nothing's ever going to change. But I appreciate that.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would agree with councilman Martin here. I think by and large, the way that the ordinance is proposed now to switch would allow the business to continue, but it's the 30, 40, 50, 60 years down the road, is that the same vision, and is that the same makeup that we want to continue? And that, as a resident, before being in council, was my understanding of it. In 60 years, when my kids are grown up, is Lindale going to look the same as it does now? And that was not the intention. And so, well, I appreciate that we have that, and we can continue supporting this business as a nonconforming. I think that's the vision that I would like to see, is what's Lindale going to be in 50 years, not necessarily keeping it, allowing it to stay the same.
So, councilmember Alessandro?
Something that just came to me, if you will, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if, I don't want to put either councilmember Martin or councilmember Mua on the spot, but the thought process that I'm interpreting myself is that it's about the type of business and not about the type of land use. And in zoning, we're talking about land use. We're not necessarily talking about type of business. And so, I think from my perspective, giving them the opportunity to conform with the land use requirements we're looking for, setback, windows, other things like that, feels like it, as opposed to forcing them out of that area, we, saying in another way, if they're willing to make redevelopment on the building happen, let's say in five years from now, and the alternative is to wait for 30 years until they decide to jettison that business, did we do what we wanted to do from a land use perspective? And that's the consideration I would make in that regard, because if 30 years from now, that business decides it doesn't want to be there, what you're going to get in the meantime, if you give them the conditional use, is a building that's conforming to the land use requirements of the zone, if they do their, you know, they are part of the retrofit. If you don't, what you're going to get 30 years from now is a building that's nonconforming and empty, and now it's not attractive to the people that want to move in there, because it didn't get updated to look and feel like the rest of the land use. So that would be the reason I would consider supporting this, because you might get out of it, the land use requirement you're looking for, and regardless of what business is in there, you're going to get, you're going to get that aesthetic, which was what we're trying to go for. That, throw that out there for consideration. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So if we were to move forward tonight, this is just to, again, study it, and then staff would come back, and there would be a public hearing, and we would have more discussion, and then we would actually be, like, we would actually vote on it then. This is just to allow staff to move forward with researching and bringing forth a formal proposal.
That's correct.
That is correct, yes.
Because that's the case, I'll support moving forward tonight.
I, thank you, councilmember Carter, and I was just going to, I was going to move it along in that way as well. I think I would agree with both sides here. I would agree to move it along so we can continue this further, continue the discussion further. I think it will be good to have a full council as we do it, and, you know, make sure councilmember Nelson is involved. Personally, I'm quite in line with councilmember Martin and councilmember Mua. Zoning is about land use, and the land use is what's happening on that land. And so if it is a, if it is something that we don't see as compatible or desirable in terms of what we want Lindale Avenue to be in 40 years, then I think this is certainly a germane conversation to be having. That being said, I'll agree with the notion of moving this study forward and then having this discussion at a later date, and we can evaluate different, you know, more completely, with a more complete council, evaluate the options on this and see where we want to be. I think that makes sense, so. Councilmember Carter, do you want to make the motion to direct staff to bring forward a city-initiated code amendment to change the status of pawn shops in the district, pawn shops in the B4 district?
Yes, I will move that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember Alessandro, to direct staff to bring forward a city initiated, city code amendment to change the status of pawn shops in the B4 district, and direct staff to do so. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. So if you bring forward information for us, and we will have this conversation and more in depth in the future. Yes, sir?
Sorry, Mayor, pardon the interruption. This wasn't formalized in the staff report, but we were hoping to get some guidance on exploring additional rezonings along Lindale Avenue if there's an appetite for that. Staff believes there are opportunities, but we needed, we would like guidance from you if you have any.
My response would be yes. I think if we, if we consider, if we have a good thing going here and we see changes happening, I think it makes good sense to consider additional zoning changes. Again, consider, not adopt tonight, but consider and talk about in the future. Councilmember Alessandro?
I have a very specific question, because it's been asked of me like four times in the past two weeks, and I just want to try to clear the air if possible, and it's related to this. Specifically, when we say there have been potentially opportunities, are we talking about David Fong's? Because I'd really just like everybody to know if that's true. Has that, has that come up? Because I'm being, I have heard all kinds of things about that particular property, but if there actually is somebody interested in developing that, and we need to change the zone to accommodate that, we should probably just be transparent about that, is what I'm getting to.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Alessandro, so we have received questions about the David Fong site, and some of the questions would involve development that's consistent with B4, and some of those questions would involve development that's not consistent with B4 as a zoning district. And so one of the questions were, that's stimulating our internal discussion, is with some of the changes that have happened around the 94 Street node since the adoption of the Lindale retrofit, is would the consultant team who, you know, in consultation with the city, would they have omitted 94 Street had those things occurred prior, you know, at the culmination of their process? We don't believe they would have, but, you know, that's something that we, we're not suggesting that it is a done deal, that it's something that should go forward, concrete, it's something that we should study, because the time appears to be somewhat of the essence, and frankly, just with the guidance of the Lindale retrofit, we just need more regulatory tools in order to continue furtherance of that plan, if we're going to execute it to the full vision, so.
That's very helpful. In no way is the city of Bloomington trying to buy that property, though, correct?
Mayor, councilmember Alessandro, that sounds, I don't work in the Port Authority, no, I'm just kidding. Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm not making it up, the amazing things that come out of people, you know, when they're, because they get wind of something, and it gets construed, and they play telephone, and next thing you know, it's not anything like what we, anybody said. So I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
I'm never amazed by that, to be honest, so. But no, I have not heard any, any discussion on that. All right, well, thank you. Thank you to our planning staff for your work on this one. Our final item on number four is 4.9. This is a discussion of our neighborhood traffic management plan with a public comment opportunity. Ms. Long, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, I'm pleased to present Ray Hayhurst from Kimley Horn and Associates to give our presentation in conjunction with our city traffic engineer, Kirk Roberts. It's been a change of what's in your agenda, so.
We are flexible, if nothing else.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Again, Ray Hayhurst with Kimley Horn.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Our agenda for tonight is as follows. We'll provide a overview of the project, its purpose and our goals, as well as provide a summary of the feedback that we've heard thus far from the public. We'll present our recommendations for speed limits on local streets, as well as our recommendations for changes to the traffic calming request program. And at the conclusion, we'll provide several recommended motion options for your consideration. As a overview, the city is updating its neighborhood traffic management program for local streets. This program will build on existing neighborhood traffic programs and add new programs that reflect the city's commitment to safety and livability of its neighborhoods. It's important to note that we want to make the program easier for residents to navigate the various programs and take advantage of the services provided by the city. Specifically, the neighborhood traffic management program strengthens and integrates the city's existing programs. Last December, the city council directed staff to look at updating the neighborhood traffic management program to specifically include five elements. That's speed limits on local streets, the traffic calming request program, pavement management program, speed awareness program, and the neighborhood park access. And the intent is to create a comprehensive approach to manage traffic speeds, improve safety, and increase access for people walking, biking, and taking transit. So the overall goals of the program are listed, are shown on the screen. They include safety, mobility, accessibility, equity in this context, making sure that all communities experience better health and well-being, with a particular focus on disadvantaged populations and populations that traditionally don't access certain city services and programs. And lastly, the goals of efficacy and fiscal sustainability, as well as making the program clear and easy to understand, so more members of the community are aware of the program and its benefits. We kicked this project off in February. We had two phases of engagement. The first phase, we introduced the project and listened to the community's concerns regarding traffic safety. Later on in the spring, we provided updates to Planning Commission and this body of city council, and we incorporated the feedback that we heard into a set of draft recommendations, and we had another round of public engagement. Over the summer, we've refined our recommendations, and we're here today to present the final recommendations that are included in our report. As I mentioned, there were two rounds of engagements. We had two virtual open houses, several pop-up events. We reached almost 200 people in person, and in addition, on our interactive map and online surveys hosted on the Let's Talk Bloomington website, we reached almost 300 responses between the two, between the map and the surveys. And lastly, there have been announcements and coverage in Star Tribune and Bloomington briefing. This slide shows the survey responses. Notably, in our first round of engagement, we had a more diverse demographics of survey respondents as compared to our second round of survey respondents. Admittedly, it was a challenge to, despite efforts to reach a greater cross-segment of the community. But what we did hear from the second survey was that people who responded were interested in using a new neighborhood traffic calming process to report their traffic safety concerns. When asked about the new recommended lower speed limit, over two-thirds of respondents said they strongly supported or somewhat supported the recommendation. And lastly, when asked what should be done to improve traffic safety near schools, near neighborhood schools, enforcing speed limits, lowering speed limits, and installing traffic calming treatments were the top three considerations. Broadly speaking, we heard four main themes. I think the first is the limited awareness of the existing traffic calming program and its benefits. Secondly, we heard from the public, Planning Commission, and the city council, the importance of safety near schools, not only the safety of our children in the community, but also safety, broadly speaking, of vulnerable road users. We heard specific safety and cut-through traffic concerns in the neighborhoods, as well as on non-local streets, which is not necessarily the purview of this specific program. And lastly, we heard excitement from the community about using new tool, new process to easily request traffic calming. As I mentioned before, we were, we provided updates to the Planning Commission and city council. In the spring, we received great feedback. You know, broadly speaking, there seemed to be support for lower speed limits on local streets, especially near schools, and general support for changes to the traffic calming request program, but staff was asked to bring back additional data on implementation costs, as well as funding sources. Last week, we presented to the Planning Commission, and they did not accept, they did not recommend acceptance. did not recommend acceptance of the neighborhood traffic management program by a four-to-two vote. While there was general support of school zone speed limits and a more accessible traffic calming request program, there was no consensus on lower speed limits for local streets, and there were concerns about the cost of speed limit implementation, as well as retaining a special tax assessment for funding traffic calming. So based on the, sorry, the feedback that we heard from the community, Planning Commission, and City Council in late spring, as well as a review of existing conditions and best practices, we're recommending a 25 mile per hour speed limit for all local streets, with consideration of a lower speed limit in school zones. Notably, I just want to emphasize that this recommendation is for local streets only and does not include non-local streets that are currently posted 30 miles per hour, so that includes 104th Street, 106th Street, and 110th Street, just to name a couple. And just for reference, this slide shows a map of existing speed limits as they are We were asked by the Planning Commission and City Council to provide more information on speed limits in surrounding communities. Just as a reminder, effective August 2019, all cities in Minnesota can set speed limits on local streets. Locally, several cities such as Adana and St. Louis Park have implemented lower speed limits on their local streets. Richfield is currently in the process of setting their speed limits, and you may be aware that the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul have set a 20 mile per hour speed limit on most of their local streets. We will point out that in both Minneapolis and St. Paul, generally speaking, their local streets have a narrower right-of-way and more parking demand, so it naturally feels for drivers a place where you would travel, hopefully closer to 20 miles per hour. So going back to Adana and St. Louis Park, we want to note that speed limits vary in both cities, and is more dependent on the context and can change based on a number of factors. So it's not a across-the-board speed limit, which has, from our perspective and the research, has some pros and cons, you know, while, namely, you just got the lack of consistency may be an issue for drivers. The major takeaway on this slide is that there has been no comprehensive post-implementation evaluation locally. Many of the evaluations nationwide have been for larger cities such as City of Boston and City of Seattle. So our goals for setting speed limits are the following. First, we want to promote safer speeds, so we want to set speed limits lower, particularly in areas where the, near schools, as well as areas with vulnerable road users. As this graphic shows, and kind of emphasizes why we care about speed, the risk to pedestrian greatly increases as driver speed increases. Secondly, and this gets back to my point earlier, we want to maintain consistency for drivers and to encourage voluntary compliance with the speed limit. And lastly, we want to set reasonable expectations. Based on the data that we've, that city staff has collected on local streets, most drivers are actually traveling closer to 25 miles per hour or lower on local streets where it's currently posted 30 miles per hour. So we feel it's important to set reasonable expectations, and again, to encourage voluntary compliance. And lastly, we want to set speed limits to support the road hierarchy and other components of the program, which Kirk will touch on shortly.
Council members, Kirk Roberts, Traffic and Transportation Engineer. So I wanted to provide some additional details and support for the speed limit that's being recommended on our local streets. Tonight's discussion focused on local streets, including those speed limits. We're presenting it that way because the council asked that we establish a comprehensive set of changes to manage speeds on local streets, including speed limits. In the next few months, staff are going to be advancing recommendations for speed limit changes on the larger, non-county roadways in the city, and that's the map you see in front of you. However, the two things are related a little bit, and if it's thought, if the council wishes to make a decision on both the local street speed limits and these larger streets, we could bring both of these forward in the near future, if that makes more sense to you, but tonight, we're bringing this forward for the local streets. As to, go ahead one more, as to how they're related, this slide is just sort of a road hierarchy. With a 25 mile an hour speed limit on local streets, the proposal that would move forward, the larger streets, starting with collectors, be posted at 30 miles an hour. There's a couple arterials that would be posted at 35, that's namely, American Boulevard and some portions of 98th Street. The trouble, and this is a nice hierarchy, the reason behind it, go one more slide forward, under the current hierarchy, is 30 miles an hour is the speed limit on local streets, as well of most, as well as most of our collector streets. So this includes roads like 102nd Street, 106th Street, as Ray mentioned, Zerkes Avenue. And the problem here is that drivers tend to optimize for time and would much rather have them keep the bulk of their trips on that collector arterial system, yet we have a speed limit that's the same on our local streets, providing no time advantage to using the collectors and arterials. The best thing we can do for our neighborhoods to keep traffic calm is keep people on the collectors and arterials for their trips. We'd like to set speed limits that dovetail with that. The, under the current configuration, the only way that we could affect such a change is perhaps to raise the speed limits on collector streets, and I'm not advocating for that, but you see the kind of the dilemma that we've been in historically here. So, setting consistent with lower speeds on local streets encourages traffic to use the collector and arterial system and stay out of the neighborhoods. And next, several, on the 25 mile an hour recommendations, several council members have been contacted about traffic issues on Bessie Road, and you're frequently, we're all contacted about traffic issues on various streets. This is just the one that we've heard about most recently, and so I'm going to use it for illustrative purposes. It's not to call anyone out, and I'm grateful for the neighborhoods reaching out, the neighbors talking about the traffic issues they're facing, so I just want to make sure neighbors understand that I do appreciate and respect their positions. So, next up here, this, we, last year, in response to some complaints for the neighbors, we actually gathered data on Bessie for a couple days, gathered speed and volume data, and I plotted it out here, and this is what it looks like. This is a scatter plot of people driving on Bessie Road with the 30 mile an hour speed limit overlaid on top. There's a couple things that are notable. First off, most of the traffic is already at or below 30 miles an hour. The reason that's interesting is if you talk to most drivers in the city, and it's not just Bloomington, it's not just people you know, but they don't know the local street speed limits are 30 miles an hour. If you don't believe me, ask your spouse and see what they come up with, ask them what the speed limit is outside. If they've recently taken their driver's test, they might know, but the rest of Minnesota doesn't. But yet, these are people that have lived in this neighborhood, they have an interest in the neighborhood, they have relationships, they have this sense of self-protection from them and their neighbors, and they've come to this equilibrium speed that's pretty good in those circumstances. They've found a way to operate consistently, except for the upper right. This person's in every neighborhood. Every neighborhood seems to have one or two of these. This is a person that's driving very fast. When we get emails from neighbors concerned about speed, this is the person they're writing about. The majority of people in our neighborhoods are driving appropriately, given the circumstances, given the rules. And this person is quite a challenge for engineers and for council members, because traffic calming, traffic management, is geared towards changing a behavior of all the drivers, of everyone on the roadway, instead of one specific individual. So we don't have a lot of tools at our disposal to deal with this person, and I don't think we'd be up, honestly, in the middle of the night when he's, he or she is bombing around the neighborhoods anyway, because we're in the council chambers. So, the biggest takeaway from this slide, though, is when I go into a neighborhood like this and I'm trying to respond to neighbors' concerns, there aren't a lot of problems in this neighborhood that merit city expenditures, public dollars being spent to solve a problem. Most people are at, are below the speed limit, they're operating according to the rules. There's not a lot that I can do for this area right now. So, advance the next one, if you would. So this is what that neighborhood looks like at 25 miles an hour. This is the same data, we just put the 25 mile an hour speed limit. What good does this change do? So, right now, we've got about one-third of the neighborhood above the limit and two-thirds below that line. You still got the knucklehead in the middle of the night is doing what they're doing, but the, the good thing about this as a speed limit is that it affirms what a majority of the drivers are doing anyway. That's a really good place to be on public policy, when you can say to people, the way that you're responding here, the way that you're managing this, is what we would like, that's about the behavior we'd like, and the other third, we can reach. So advance one more. This is a group, the group that's above the speed limit line now, we can, the first thing we can do is loudly and proudly proclaim that the speed limit on local streets in Bloomington is 25 miles an hour, and make that known. We've got the entryway signs, and we'll have the other things that, that'll be talked about as Ray proceeds through his presentation. Again, these are people that are invested in this neighborhood, they have relationships, they have a sense of community, they like their neighborhood, and they'll respond to that. If we set an expectation, this is how we think you should behave, we will see speed reductions in that, in that top portion. Closer compliance at 25 is more attainable, and that's also why it's probably the most common speed limit in the U.S., is 25 miles an hour on local streets. So council, when we, the same street, go back one more, go back, yep. If we came back in a year after changing the speed limits, two years, three years, we'd see speeds come down on some streets. If we don't see a significant change, we might need to do a little bit more. We can do some of those lower-cost treatments, like information, maybe we put a radar sign out, or the police deploy their speed radar trailer for a while, just to inform drivers, hey, you're going a little faster than you should be on this roadway. They probably don't know, perhaps we just have a lot of busy parents and they're just not aware of their speeds in that area, so we can continue to bring that down to what the community's expectation is for, on that street. If we had some specific problem areas, then we can address those, perhaps with some roadway changes through the traffic calming program, or we wait until we're doing some reconstruction work in there, and then we go and make those changes to address safety issues that are still remaining, once we brought those speeds down to where we want them. So, the question comes up, and it has on Bessie, is why not go ahead and set the speed limit to 20 miles an hour? If we get some bang for the buck for 25, let's go to 20, and that's tempting. The next graph provides some clues. So, if you move the speed limit to 20 with our existing data set, you've taken two-thirds of the drivers with that change, and you've made them violators. The road, the clues being sent by the roads in Bloomington seem to suggest that drivers feel safe, they feel comfortable at about 25 miles an hour or below. We arbitrarily set this speed limit lower. Again, these are people that have lived there for long periods of time, they believe they're safe, good, moral, conscious people, and we've told them that how you're operating is incorrect, and wide majority of them, how they're operating is no longer correct. That's not just going to irritate them, but it's going to seem like it was a decision that was made arbitrarily, and it will lose credibility, because the road, the community, the neighborhood they're in is not sending the signals that this is the right speed to go. Based on our density, the land use, the way that we developed our road system, it just wouldn't make sense. Any changes in behavior would be short-lived, and you'd have a constant struggle to be trying to manage and inform people about their speeds. If we did want to change the road geometry, we'd have to go in and physically do construction, install speed humps or other traffic calming techniques along this roadway on a fairly consistent basis. Once we got through with this half-mile stretch, we've got the rest of the 350 miles of city roadway to tackle at that point. Several cities, I want to change, just say, several cities, as was alluded to, have gone down to a 20 mile an hour speed limit, and they've been successful. These are cities like Seattle, Boston, and if you've been to those cities, the parking demand is very high, often on a local street, you're down to one lane of traffic and you're having to negotiate. You're pretty fortunate if you get up to 20 miles an hour in those cities. That's been very successful to them. They're affirming what people already know, and they've had good success. Minneapolis and St. Paul have done similar. Again, cities with a much higher parking demand, a much different time when they were developed in the process, and those speed limits could make very good sense for those cities. The studies are out there, we'll see how they look when they do some follow-up work. But the way that Bloomington has built out, the way our land use has shaped up, is a very different set of circumstances, and so the speed limits on local streets that hold the best opportunity to slow traffic and to improve quality of life for residents in Bloomington is 25 miles an hour, and that's what staff are recommending. And so, council, if there aren't any questions on this specific portion, I'll turn it back over to Ray to finish us out.
Questions, Councilmember Lohman?
Just a quick one, because there was the argument made at the 20, on that earlier slide, that went from 26% down to 13%, and that was the main argument on the Vessie piece, that you end up having that 10% reduction in the, in chances of folks getting hurt. So, am I hearing you saying correctly that with the way that our roads are constructed, we really wouldn't find that same benefit to going down to 20%?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, so, this risk is independent of the specific streets. It's just to say that as speed increases, the risk to pedestrian does not increase linearly, it actually increases somewhat algebraically, and so there's always a higher risk to pedestrians when speeds are higher. And so I don't take any issue with that particular graph. My argument is merely that Bloomington streets are much more amenable, they will be much more self-enforcing at 20 miles, or 25 miles an hour posted than you would ever get at 20 miles an hour. And in fact, going to a 20 mile an hour speed limit would be a, it would have very little long-term effect on driver speeds, I think, in Bloomington.
I'll proceed forward. So, touching on the second part of our recommendation, which is consideration for school zone speed limits, so this would include posted 20 mile per hour speed limits on select larger streets around public and private charter schools during arrival and dismissal periods. This recommendation would be coincide with updating the city's Safe Routes to School district-wide plan, and so supporting those lower speed limits in school zones with recommendations for improving pedestrian and bicycle mobility. Notably, a lot of schools in the city are located on non-local streets, so we recommend coordination with the county on setting those speed limits on their roadways. So our implementation plan- So our implementation plan for lowering speed limits on local streets has four main components, and I'll walk through them. The first component includes policy, code, and process changes. So in addition to adopting a policy of 25 mile per hour speed limits on local streets with consideration of a lower school zone speed limit, there would be changes to the code, which include a ordinance that explicitly states the city's authority without including specific speed limits. The second part of that, or second thing to note, is that there are no code changes needed for setting school zone speed limits. Any changes to speed limits on larger, non-county roadways would be set by the city engineer and updated by official map. We've also identified the need for a signage plan for local streets, so that would include 25 mile per hour speed limit signage, school zone flasher assembly, and speed radar signage. We've also identified the need for a traffic signal plan for non-local streets where there is a lower school zone speed limit. And this would require coordination with county, MINDOT, and neighboring municipalities. The second component, component of our implementation plan is educating the public about the new speed limits, as Kirk mentioned. We recognize that compliance, 100% compliance with new speed limits is unrealistic, so we want to educate the public and focus on strategies that provide that real-time feedback that shifts driver behavior. So this would include implementing mobile radar signs at locations such as speed transition zones entering the city, school zones, and identified problematic locations where there's a history of excessive speeding. We've identified four major components to implement this plan, all related to signage. So then, again, that includes 25 mile per hour signage, speed radar signs, school zone flasher assemblies, as well as variable message boards that would be deployed kind of in the initial lowering of, of the speed limits and be positioned at key gateway entrances to the city. As far as funding sources go, the new 25 mile per hour signage, you know, we assume using the in-place signposts, and that would be our identified funding source is the city council strategic priorities funding with a general fund used for maintenance and replacement of that signage. The general fund would be used to fund new speed radar signs, and the city council strategic priorities would be used to fund the school zone flasher assembly and variable message And then lastly, and maybe the most important part, piece of this, is that we recommend that staff complete and present a initial evaluation of speed limit changes to the city council within three years of implementation of speed limit changes. So this evaluation would look at before and after changes, so before and after the change to the speed limit, and it would focus on speeds on local streets, crash history, pedestrian and bicycle activity, as well as additional traffic safety metrics. And on to our recommendation for the traffic calming request program. So just as a reminder of what traffic calming is, traffic calming is changing the street design to encourage slower speeds and reduce cut-through traffic. The change in street design is supported by education and traffic awareness strategies leaning less on enforcement. Our specific goal with traffic calming, with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, is to help city staff prioritize requests from the residents across the city by identifying a set of selection criteria. We've reviewed the existing traffic calming process, and we've noted some areas for improvement, and we're recommending a two-year cyclical process that, as shown on the screen, that would start with requests submitted by the public, prioritization of the requests by city staff with criteria I'll go into on a further slide. In the spring of year one, there would be information gathering, so that would include speeds, traffic volumes, pedestrian and bicycle activity, as well as input from the community to better define what, what the problem is. City staff would present a recommended traffic calming treatment and receive feedback from the community. There is also the option to install a trial traffic calming device so that members in the community can better understand of how a more permanent installation would function. So based on input, information gathering and community input, staff would recommend traffic calming treatment for planning commission and city council at the end of year one for approval. Assuming approval, in year two, it would go to construction and then evaluation. This traffic calming requests program is eligible for local, only local streets. Traffic safety issues on non-local streets would be addressed by staff using other programs and city res, designated city resources. As I mentioned, by establishing a set prioritization criteria, staff can prioritize requests citywide, really where community and transportation needs are greatest. So we've identified five criteria listed, or weighted, highest to lowest. So that includes traffic, pedestrian and bicycle experience, equity, community destinations. So notably, that includes schools, parks, and other important community destinations, as well as the number of people nearby the requested location. Speed data unfortunately is not widely available for all local streets, but that is additional data point that would be considered if all the requests had somehow had a speed data, then it would be a bonus criteria. We've identified several major considerations for traffic calming options. So this includes effectiveness, so the propensity of a traffic calming treatment to reduce speeds, reduce number of crashes, and reduce the severity of crashes. Cost is a very important consideration, so that's not only the construction cost, but it's the long-term operations and maintenance year-round, summer, fall, spring, winter, as well as we want to consider maintenance, ADA accessibility, impacts to bicycle and pedestrian mobility, as well as any environmental impacts. We've simplified the existing range of toolbox, or range, range of traffic calming treatments to two tiers. The first tier includes vertical elements, so that includes speed cushions, speed humps, and speed tables, as well as curb extensions and neighborhood traffic circles. We've included more information on each of these traffic calming treatments in the report. I think it's just important to, to know that each of these tools has, you know, a, works for different issues that the city is, is trying to solve and the issues that residents have, have brought up. In this first tier of traffic calming options, there's the option to, as I mentioned before, install trial devices to, to test these ideas and to get that community feedback and buy-in. The second tier of traffic calming options generally require, are generally more complex and require more engineering. Some of them have potential impacts to street network, so we're recommending that the second tier of options, which includes chicanes, partial closures, diverters, and chokers, would be, these options would be included with the pavement management program. As with the lower speed limits, we've developed an implementation plan. The first component, from a policy standpoint, would be removing the existing petition requirement and application fee, which we've identified as a potential burden to, to residents. Secondly, along a similar theme, we're recommending changing the funding structure from exclusively special tax assessment for property owners to incorporate other funding sources. As I mentioned before, the traffic calming request process will be intertwined with the pavement management program process. So as shown on this slide, the tan boxes indicate where the traffic calming request program would sync up with the existing steps in the pavement management program. So in year one, starting with a request in the winter, there would be the spring, look ahead, neighborhood meetings to discuss traffic issues. In the summer, there would be the option to deploy traffic calming devices. And then in the fall, there would be the neighborhood meeting to discuss residents' experience with the traffic calming devices, and if any changes would be needed before advancing to a more permanent traffic calming device. In terms of budget considerations, we've identified three major line items. So that includes the need for additional tube counters to support the additional data collection needs, as well as construction costs for permanent and trial traffic calming treatments. As I mentioned before, we're recommending a mix of funding sources for the tier-one traffic calming treatments. So that includes city council's strategic priorities funding, general funding, and a reduced, but not eliminated, special tax assessment. You'll note the asterisks, we're also recommending that city council's strike, strategic priorities be used to fund those tier-one traffic calming treatments in areas prioritized due to equity considerations, therefore waiving the need for a special tax assessment, and thus lowering the burden on those communities. And then lastly, we're recommending evaluation, so that's at the project level, so performing a evaluation within three years of implementation of each traffic calming treatment to include vehicle speeds, volumes, crash history, but also consideration of other metrics important to the community. The second evaluation recommendation is for the entire program. We don't think we're going to get it exactly right the first time around, so I think it's important to have a check-in within three years, perform that evaluation to assess who in the community is using the program, how many people are using it, what is the impact on funding and staff resources, and what is the general awareness in the community. We recommend, again, supporting the traffic, these changes to the traffic calming request program with neighborhood-based engagement, providing a one-stop shop on the city website so people know what tools are available, can know what the considerations are of traffic calming treatments perhaps being considered for their street, and really just boost awareness and understanding of what, what the options are for residents. For, we also recommend development of a plain language guide and using things such as yard signs and sidewalk details to make any proposed changes more visible to the community members, so not just people driving, but also people walking and biking on streets. And with that, we present two recommended motion options, the first of which is to accept the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, and the second is to not accept the program at this time, but have staff modify the program as you see fit. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, Mr. Hirst, appreciate it. Council questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
I have one question about the, about the stuff that's included in the PMP. I, I don't see generally reduction of the actual width of the road, which is something we've talked about before as an option as well. And so I'm curious as to whether or not, as part of PMP analysis, would, would we, would we consider a full reduction, you know, a, what's the opposite of widening? A narrowing, there we go, wow, 10 o'clock, woo! A narrowing of the road itself, as opposed to some of the other treatments that you mentioned. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, you are correct. To date, we have not explored moving existing curb and gutters, with the exception of some narrowing at the intersections. But if we had a traffic calming request, we would treat that differently here in the future? Does that answer your question? I feel like I've missed part of it.
No, it was just, it was just, when we put, when, when you had the slide up for the toolkit, it wasn't part of the toolkit. And I was wondering if that was intentional, or if there was a reason it wasn't included in the toolkit.
Oh, just the narrowing?
Yes, correct, narrowing as a, as one of these options. It wasn't included, I was just curious if there's a reason for that.
We, the reason it hasn't been concluded to date is just the cost and the assessment of the curb and gutter, if it, the street has existing curb and gutter. Our current practice with streets that don't have curb and gutter is we send them out a survey, and we say, city standard roadway width is 32 feet, but now is a great opportunity for you to weigh in, and if you want 28 feet, the parking would be limited to one side of the street. And so we've done that on the upcoming meetings, and we have the 2024 projects, we have three different neighborhoods, streets that are targeted for that survey. But we have not done that with streets that have existing curb and gutter, whether it's 32 feet, which is our current standard, or our old standard, which is 36 feet, just because of the cost and expense. We haven't felt that people were willing to pay an additional assessment. So if you're willing to open that up, we could certainly add that to our tier-two thing. It's, to us, it's more of a financial consideration on how are we going to pay for, you know, 600 feet of curb and gutter? If it's on one block, and if it's, you know, half a mile long, that cost goes up really quickly.
Understood. Is, is it your assessment that the, so the cost obviously is significantly greater than these other options in your toolbox? Completely understood, especially if we would be essentially tearing something out we just put in a couple of years ago. Totally get that. Is there, is there a, on the benefit side, is there, is there ever enough benefit to decide, to, to justify that? Meaning, is the, is the, the narrowing? enough benefit to decide, to justify that? Meaning, is the, is the, the narrowing, knowing that narrowing is a good tool? How good is it? And like, would, would we want to have that as a, as an understood consideration so that we could give that information to a resident community and say, yeah, it's going to be expensive because we're going to be ripping out everything, but here's the benefit for you. And, you know, if you really want to solve your problem that way, if you really want to solve your problem, that's the way. I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm curious if there's a, if there's a reason to consider it ever.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, I think that goes to personal preference on values and what you value. So I don't think you're going to get a clear answer from the community. And I would suspect if we did a survey, we'd get 50% for and 50% against. And we'd be like, okay, scratching our heads, what, what is the right thing to decide? Because it does have, narrower roads do have the ability to slow down traffic, and that has a benefit, as we've seen from some of the pedestrian graphics you saw earlier in the winter, if we have a winter like we had in 2022, 2023. It limits your ability for emergency response. It limits your ability for parking. So it all comes down to what do you value and how much do you value it?
Appreciate. Thank you.
Other questions, council? All right. Well, thank you. We did have in the agenda that we were going to provide a public comment opportunity to item 4.9. And I would like to open that public comment opportunity right now. If anyone here in the chambers or on the phone would like to make a public comment regarding item 4.9, the neighborhood traffic management plan, you're welcome to come forward now. No one in the chamber is coming forward? Mr. Billard, anybody on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, nobody on the phone for this item.
All right. Then we will close our public comment period on item 4.9 tonight. And I will turn to the council for any additional discussion and/or possible action on this. And I will say, council, I mean, I'll just kick it off saying, when we first started talking about this, we, we said flat out, no, we couldn't just, you can't just reduce your, the speed limit out of this problem. We've got to, we, we needed to look at different ways to address this and talked about the education, the enforcement, the, the environmental changes that are possible that we would make and all the different pieces. And I do appreciate that this proposed plan touches on many of those. And it's, it gives plenty of options and plenty of tools in the toolkit as we look to reduce the speed in, in neighborhoods. I will say one point that surprised me, the, just looking at the, the speeds on Vesey Road, I never would have guessed that they were actually sub 30 miles an hour on average. And that surprises me, but also that encourages me. And that encourages me that we can get there with other neighborhoods as well. And whether it's just anecdotal that there's one or two speeders in the neighborhood, or it's a consistent problem, at least we have, we have data that shows that it's possible it can be solved and, and it can become the norm, which is basically what we're looking for. I don't think we, we don't want to pull people over and ticket everybody into this. We want this just to become the norm. Everybody thinks when you're in the neighborhoods, you're driving within the speed limit. You're driving reasonably. You're not putting kids in danger. You're improving the quality of life for everybody who lives in that neighborhood. So I'm encouraged by that. I'm also encouraged, just as I sat here, because I think in the presentation, it said that, you know, I mentioned, we always hear that Minneapolis and St. Paul have reduced their speed limit, but they also mentioned several other communities. I just did a quick Google search and came up with, in addition to St. Louis Park, Inida, Golden Valley, St. Anthony, Rochester, Maple Grove, New Brighton, Arden Hills, Bayport, Melrose, and Mata Medei. And that was just as I was sitting here scrolling quickly during the presentation. I apologize. I was listening, but I was also, I was multitasking is what I was doing. And so, to 25, to 25, not down to 20, but to 25. And so as we get the much expected blowback from some folks that were just trying to be like Minneapolis and lowering our speed limit, no, we're, we're actually a little bit behind the curve in terms, a lot of the communities in, in Minnesota who are looking to make their community safer by reducing the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. So again, I'm, I think this is, this is a good process. I think there's been a lot of thought put into it. There's been a lot of feedback taken on this. And, and I think I'm, I'm ready to move it forward and, and consider it and make it part of what we have and see where it goes from here in response to, once again, the most common thing that I hear from residents in this city. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also will be supporting the proposal moving forward. I also agree that most people in Bloomington do not know what the speed is on local streets. I did my own study. It was very scientific of just asking people randomly. But I mean, I just asked people like, do you know what the speed limit is? And nobody, nobody knew. And so the one thing I would say is for us to consider actually adding more speed limit signs throughout the city. I think I was, I was looking at the, one of the Seattle studies, and they did say new speed limit signs installed in greater density also contribute to the program's success. And so that was one thing I kind of wanted to flag. But I do think in our last conversation, somebody had mentioned that there wasn't research that showed that decreasing speeds actually slows people down. And, and as was mentioned today, that there are studies that show that decreasing speed limits slow people down and reduce the number of crashes. And then also those crashes are less dangerous as the data shows us. So the last thing I want to say, I think the legislature approved a study on speed safety cameras at this last legislative session. And so I would just encourage us to kind of watch how that goes because in the future, if cities can adopt speed safety cameras, I think that would be an excellent thing for us to work on, maybe in partnership with Hennigan County, to enforce. I think enforcement comes with all, all kinds of layers of issues. But if it is a speed safety camera, I mean, it's pretty straightforward if you get caught speeding on camera, or if your vehicle does. My husband got me a speeding ticket once. But so, yeah, otherwise, you know, I think this is great. I really appreciate the, the research and the intentionality and all of the community engagement and all of the conversation that we've had. Oh, one last thing I was going to say too. The school speed zones, very supportive of reducing those speed limits. I will say some schools are in neighborhoods, and even 20 seems like it might be a lot. And I know we want to have consistency, but I think about, like, my kids go to Hillcrest, and the way it's set up over there, I think 15 would be plenty. So I would just say, like, let's keep an, an open mind maybe about whether it's 15 or 20 in those school zones. With that, I will, I will leave it at that.
Councilmember DeLisandro, and then Councilmember Muah. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Very, very quickly. Yeah, I'm excited about this. Thank you for all your work. Staff did a great job. I think, I feel, I feel heard. I hope that residents do too, and both as a resident and as a council member. The only thing I didn't see in tonight's proposal, you mentioned it at the beginning, but not during the presentation, was traffic calming efforts around our parks. I'm assuming that's deferred, that's kind of being managed as part of the parks master plan, as opposed to a traffic calming program. But I'm okay either way. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. That's still really important. I don't want to spend millions of dollars on our parks and then have not solved, making sure kids can get to them safely.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thanks.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I fully support the, the school zone reductions and the traffic calming options. I still have hesitations with the local streets. But what I like and what we saw tonight was that there is a study in those other streets that I have more concerns about. And so my preference would be to see the local street option and the collector street options together, to see what the collective reduction would be for that versus passing that together with everything as the, the motion is laid out. And so that, that's where my hesitation is still at. I still don't think unless we do something with these other streets that are really the, the main issues that contribute to the local issue. I, I, I just don't think that's comprehensive enough for me to, to support this right now.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited about this, in particular because I'm kind of imagining down the line when we've had, say, our first neighborhood step forward, they, it turns out that we have data to verify that there is the safety issue. They pick a couple of options out of the traffic calming toolbox, and then we can put that on the front page of the briefing and say, let us walk you through the beginning of this process to the end and show you what it looks like for community members stepping up and leading change in their neighborhood. I think that, that gets to the heart of a lot of the public engagement that we're doing in a lot of different areas of the city and could serve as a pretty neat concrete example that'll get people curious. And I think, kind of even further down the line, as we're seeing this program of neighbors raising their hand to flag issues as kind of the canary in, in the coal mine, how can we start aggregating some of that data to say, we're seeing consistent patterns about the type of streets where folks are having these concerns, and we're just going to start working traffic calming toolbox options into the regular course of our PMP moving forward in similarly situated streets, which I'm sure staff has already way out ahead on in doing some of already. But just to make sure that, that the folks that, that have the time to advocate for themselves and participate in a process like this is informing or thinking about the rest of the community as opposed to dictating our project ordering.
Councilmember Lohman, any thoughts on this?
All I'll say is I was surprised that this didn't pass the planning commission. That shocked me, especially with this body, you know, really wanting to look at it. So that, that kind of, kind of concerned me. I appreciate your, your comments. And I certainly am concerned about those other areas. But hey, man, talk about a perfect policy. I've got nothing to say in complaining about this. Nothing.
So I, I will say, Councilmember Muah, to your concerns, I, I don't think anything that I've seen presented tonight precludes further work on how to slow traffic down on, on some of those other streets as well. Some we, we don't have control over, the, the county roads. We, we're at the mercy of the county roads in a lot of ways. But I don't think anything that we've heard tonight or anything that we've talked about precludes additional, additional study, additional work, additional efforts to slow people down. Because you're right, that's where, I mean, frankly, the, the neighborhoods are bad. Old Jacoby Road at rush hour is terrifying sometimes. So, yeah, I agree with you there. So, so I, I think we can continue that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, a quick, quick specific comment on that. I think, Councilmember Muah, that's a, a great point. In the hierarchy slides that Kirk presented, I think that was the goal, right, was to, to try to create the, the striation so that it's more clear to people when they are on a collector's street and they're not on a collector's street. Is there any reason we can't also provide direction to move on that today? So, so it may be a one-two thing as opposed to delay and one thing, but we could still probably get it. I don't know what the timing was for that, but I, I don't think I want to let that fall behind either. I think it was a really important step for us to be looking at. So I don't know, I don't know, Kirk, if that's something you were expecting we would be giving you direction on tonight and it would be a short-term thing versus a long-term? I don't know, Mr. Mayor, what you're thinking on that.
Mayor Bussi, Councilmember DeLisandro. So I need to get a gauge on, on the intent of the council with regards to the local streets because that forms the basis of where we go from here on our larger streets. And so with, with the, it sounds like the direction the council is going to go on this, we will bring the larger streets issue, the speed limits on those forward to you next in the next few weeks or so, or month or so, for your approval on that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, that's great.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my, just my preference is I would rather see this together with the larger streets. So that's my major hesitation with it.
Understood. Council, any additional discussion on this? Or are we ready to see some motion, some action on this?
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
I will make the motion to accept the neighborhood traffic management program.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the neighborhood traffic management plan as presented. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-one with Councilmember Muah in opposition. Thank you. Good work on this. And I am looking forward to seeing how we continue to move on this. This is, this is good stuff and it, it's overdue. And as I keep saying, it's one, something that we keep hearing from folks that we need to happen. So well done and looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. Will, will we have the city staff then, as we've kind of defined here, that part of this is that we're going to fund this out of strategic priorities? That was one of the things that we asked. Are we gonna, I think there's a budget presentation for strategic priorities coming up. Can we make sure that this is included in that so we have an understanding of the impact?
I, I think that would have to be part of the deal here. Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make a note of it. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So with us approving this tonight, when would the 25 mile an hour on local streets go into effect?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, we don't have a date certain for that because we want to do one educational program for our community. We think it would be confusing if we did 25 miles and then three months later, we said, hey, and by the way, on the collectors, you're going to be driving 30 and 35. So we want to hold them all together. So as part of the implementation program, you saw we had different policies and ordinance changes that need to be coming. So you'll get a packet of all of them together, to Councilmember Muah's point. Like, we don't want to dribble it out. We want to have one comprehensive, this is our education program, and this is what we're changing, and it's going to be effective. Let's arbitrarily say May 1st. But I don't actually know that. So don't hold me back to that date.
Perfect. Thank you. That makes sense.
Councilmember Lohman?
Did we include the extra additional signs that Councilmember Carter talked about? Because I like that idea. I wasn't sure if we included that at all or not.
The what?
The additional signs that Councilmember Carter asked for.
I, I don't think we did. I think we, it was included in the, in the plan. I mean, re-signage, I don't think extra signs was necessarily included. It certainly couldn't be something that, as we talk about this, is a strategic priority funding.
Okay, yeah, maybe we could get rid of that. So hopefully you'll remember that. Because I like that idea. I just slipped my mind when we came around to talking about it.
Yep. Okay. Again, thank you. Thanks for the conversation. Our final item tonight, as always, is our city council policy and issue update. And I will kick us off, council. I've got actually three things, and I'll go quickly as I can. First of all, in our council listening session tonight, we heard from two people. One, once again, a brand new person that we had not heard from tonight, Ms. Diana DiChristina, talking about the Bryant Park renovation. She talked passionately and eloquently and intellectually and very creatively about what might need to happen to make Bryant Heart, the Bryant Park renovation a success. So we thank her and the other neighbors for being there that, this evening and for bringing that forward to us. And Ms. Sally Ness asked for an internal affairs investigation regarding her interactions with some Bloomington detectives, and we will move that forward through the proper channels as it should be with the, within the police department. The second item that I want to bring forward is to tell you all about the city manager, Mr. Verbrugge and I, our trip to Japan as part of the US Midwest, US-Japan Association Summit in Tokyo. Just as a quick recap, that association, that group has been meeting for 53 years now. It's a group of 10 United States in the Midwest that meets and regularly, annually, with Japanese business community and to discuss economic issues, trade issues, investment issues, and so on. Highly successful meeting, I thought. I'd be curious to hear Mr. Verbrugge, Mr. Verbrugge can jump in at any time as well. But highly successful to hear from all of the governors who were on board. We were there with Governor Walz and as well as Governor Whitmer from Michigan. Governor of, of Indiana was along, Governor of Nebraska. We had a number of governors from the United States, as well as a number of governors from prefectures in Japan, talking about the economic issues, the economic conditions, the trade that has gone on, the relationships that have been built. And I think that's been the key to all of this, is the relationships that have been built between the two groups over the course of the past 50 or so years. Minnesota first took part in this in 2019, and we heard from Governor Walz that since that time, trade with Japan in Minnesota has increased by 50%. So clearly, there is the, the success story behind that, and we're looking to get a piece of that for Bloomington because we have, we have international business here in Bloomington, but we wanted, we're looking for ways, obviously, to expand that in as many ways as possible. We also had the opportunity to have lunch with the governor and the commissioner of deed and a few other folks with the, the executives from Nankin Corporation in, in Japan. And Nankin owns Polar Semiconductors. And so we had a very good discussion with them. And it was good and enlightening and helpful to, to meet with the, the Japanese counterparts of the, we know the folks here at Polar very well. We talk to them all the time, to talk to their folks in, in Japan, and to express our thanks for their continued investment in, excuse me, Sanken. Did I say Nankin? I meant Sanken. Thank you very much. Their continued investment in Minnesota and the work that they are doing and their, their commitment to Minnesota and the, and the expansion of the, the Polar facility. We had the opportunity to present to the Osaka Chamber of Commerce. We talked about Chamber of Commerce. We talked about, um, uh, that relationship building importance, um, in, in a lot of different ways. We visited the Osaka World Expo site. They have a lot of work to do in the next 18 months before the World Expo is scheduled to open. And the final, uh, very enjoyable time was we spent time in Azumi City with the group, the folks who were just here about a month ago. Uh, we went to see them and it was quite the party. Uh, Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanagan joined us there and we knew we were into something different as we rolled up and there was about 40 people on the sidewalk cheering and waving banners and, and waiting for us and the TV cameras and, and all that was going on. And we had a chance, uh, made an address to their city council. Uh, we had a formal tea. We had a formal ceremony. It was, it was really something. And it was, it was really worthwhile and, and good to do. And more than anything, as I kept stressing, we, we talked about business with a lot of folks, a lot of economic talk, but more than anything, it was about the relationship building. And we saw that with every stop that we made. And for that matter, uh, within our travel party as well. It was with the governor and the lieutenant governor. It was with the new commissioner of deed, Matt Verillick. Uh, it was with the staff from deed who we work with constantly, but to be able to interact and talk with them. Folks from Greater MSP, from, uh, Medical Alley, uh, there was a Minnesota Ag group that was out there at the same time. So this whole notion of cultivating relationships was, was fully on, on display, uh, both, uh, with the folks that we, we know well, we got to know better, and to make new contacts, uh, over in Japan. And so it was definitely a worthwhile trip and, and definitely beneficial and looking forward to, to seeing what might come of it in the future. So, anything to add, Mr. Verbrugge?
It's an excellent summary, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would just extend my, my gratitude, especially to the folks in Azumi City, Marisuji, and, uh, Mr. Koshimo, who was the, uh, director of their sister city exchange organization. The hospitality that they extended, uh, was tremendous. And the fact that the state of Minnesota, uh, coordinated almost every element of that, uh, visit.
Yes.
And had Lieutenant Governor Flanagan along for it, uh, was, uh, was, um, truly gratifying. And I just want to say thank you to the, uh, staff at the Trade Office at the Department of Employment and Economic Development. They do a fantastic job coordinating a, uh, a governor delegation and a, uh, an agriculture department, uh, delegation and then inviting along, uh, community, uh, members. Uh, we were not the only city representative there. City of Brooklyn Park, City of Stillwater, uh, also have interests in, uh, Japanese companies, uh, and, uh, trying to develop, uh, trade and, and business development and with Japanese interests. Um, one of the things that came out of our discussion in Azumi was a very strong interest on their part to doing some sort of business, uh, exchange. And in trying to develop some sort of business relationship between our two communities more so than exists today. And so over the next year, I committed to, uh, Marisuji and their, uh, council, uh, chairperson, uh, Sakamoto, that we would, uh, work on that as we continue to try to foster that relationship.
Thank you for that addendum, Mr. Verbrugge. Very, very well done. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the council on, on our, on our trip? Councilmember Lohman?
Uh, not really a comment, just, uh, just, I want to commend both, uh, the mayor and the manager, uh, for having that opportunity to, to take that, uh, that, that international trip and also having the opportunity, uh, uh, to strengthen that relationship we have with their sister city, uh, organization. I, I do know that, uh, the mayor, um, and the sister city, um, president have very much been interested in that, that business connection. And I look forward to seeing, uh, how that, uh, relationship blossoms. Um, so again, thank you guys. Uh, I know that was a little extra step that needed to be taken, but, uh, really do appreciate, um, you know, especially with all the history that we've had, um, between our two, uh, cities, um, and what they're trying to do in Japan.
Thank you. Uh, the final piece that I have to add, this Thursday evening, our friends at Oasis for Youth are hosting an event up at the Edina Country Club, actually. It's called the Pathway Home. And it's a, it, it's a, a bit of a fundraiser, but also a bit of a, an opportunity for them to share an update about their new programming, to talk to folks and to, uh, an opportunity to meet their new executive director. And so it's Thursday night, uh, Edina Country Club, 5 to 7:30. Please let me know if you're interested in going. I'm certainly be there. I think, uh, Mayor Hublin from Edina and Mayor, uh, Supple from Richfield are gonna be there as well. But, uh, I think it would be great to have any, any councilmembers who might have an opportunity to be there. It'd be great to have you there as well, and I know they would appreciate it. Uh, if, if you're interested in going, we're, we're past the RSVP deadline, but if you just let me know, I'll pass it on to them and off we go. So, thanks so very much. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I have two quick things. Um, uh, in similar vein, uh, so I had the honor and privilege, uh, to be invited to speak at the State of Black Health Conference along with Community Development Director Carla Henderson and, um, Chief Equity Officer Faith Jackson. Um, so the focus of the conference was obviously on health, but really specifically institutional injustices, economic barriers, and then wellness and chronic disease disparities. So a lot of sessions around, uh, social determinants of health. So transportation, housing, access to healthcare, um, tobacco, and so really, really good sessions. And it, I will say, it just made me very proud of, like, the work that we've done in Bloomington and, and in Minnesota in general, talking with people across the country. Um, we really are leading the way in many ways. And so our session, um, was really focused on talking about the racial equity work that we've done in Bloomington from the Racial Equity Business Plan to declaring racism a public health crisis, and then the establishment of the Office of Racial Equity and Inclusion and Belonging. Um, and it was very, very well attended. Um, we had very good feedback and people reaching out afterwards wanting to talk more. So, uh, really, really happy and proud of the work there. Um, and the second thing, um, so I've just become aware of, um, a couple of people who have resigned from our boards and commissions. And it reminded me when we did our boards and, when we revamped the application process, um, I know I brought this up. I think others probably did too at the time, that we really should be not only, um, you know, making sure the application process is, um, a good one and an equitable one, but also making sure we're evaluating the experience that people have on our boards and commissions. Um, so that we, so when there are issues, we have the opportunity to improve. And, and I don't, I don't know why certain people resigned. I don't know the details. Um, but it is concerning when you start to see some trends. And so, uh, I really think that we need to have that evaluation built in to part of, um, our boards and commissions process. And, and then also really, you know, make sure that we're looking at the data related to the evaluation too. So, um, and see if there's trends there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Congratulations on the successful presentation. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. And I'll, I'll rearrange my, my comments because I was gonna talk about boards and commissions as well. Um, and I, you know, just, uh, I, I know, I know we've had a number of folks who've leave the, the commissions and that type of thing. And I just think that one of the parameters that, uh, past councils that talked about, um, Colter and I believe a few folks are up here, I think Carter and a number of folks have said, you know, you wanted to have, whenever we're selecting people, try to have as many councilmembers available. And I've just noticed, uh, in a number of our, our experiences, we haven't been able to get as many councilmembers there. And so I wonder if we could, along with that evaluation, um, that Councilmember Carter just brought forward, that we really look to try to find ways in which do we maybe designate times in the year and make that a part of our, our calendar or something for if we do have turnover, um, that really allows us to kind of plan that, you know, maybe have it a Monday set aside so that we can all really be there. Cause I've noticed that we've been most successful with keeping people, uh, in our commissions when as many voices on this council have been able to participate in that evaluation process. And so I would encourage us as we, we do that to not, you know, again, not, not taking away, I'm sure we'll have a great, um, folks on, on sustainability, but want to make sure we have as many of those voices that are up here at that table as we do that. Um, so, um, I don't know if, if other folks agree with me on that, but I hope that we'll consider that. Um, pardon me. Uh, fighting a little bit of my, uh, hard throat here. Um, I wanted to mention, uh, that, um, we've got, got in quite a few calls, um, uh, or at least I have, with regards to one of the elements, uh, that are part of our sales tax piece around the, uh, um, around the nine-mile, um, uh, uh, park, uh, type piece. And I wanted to just get a clarification on that because I wanted to just be sure that my understanding was that they weren't going to have a, uh, that there is no proposal from the staff, um, for a bike trail down in, in that area. Or that, that that is still an open conversation. I'm not sure if city manager could, could comment on that because I've got, you know, folks that I know who I've talked to at the doors and that kind of thing. They're, they're convinced that we're putting in a, um, throughout the entire part of that. It's, it, this is not a, a natural resources plan. It is really, uh, kind of a way to put in a bicycle trail.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I appreciate you, uh, raising the issue. We've had, uh, similar feedback as well. Uh, I think the, the fact is that with that project, there's going to be a significant amount of engagement about the details of the project, uh, if and when it is approved by voters. Uh, it is, uh, primarily a, a natural resource, uh, and ecological restoration project in addition to the, uh, facilities in the parks that are adjacent to those areas. Uh, we do want to definitely improve accessibility. So people of all mobilities, uh, have the opportunity to enjoy those areas. And it is not being developed exclusively or primarily as a, uh, as a bike path. So I appreciate you raising that. Our staff is working to try and, uh, provide some clarifying language for people who are looking for more information. And, uh, we'll continue to get that out as we move forward.
Thank you. I'll leave it at, at that. Uh, then the, uh, we had a conversation earlier today, um, about pawn shops. And what I might suggest that we do, um, around that is have a conversations about, um, those licenses within the city, um, as a separate conversation. Um, I know we talked about how not wanting to have it in the Lindell area, but I'm wondering if we need to reevaluate whether or not, um, pawn shops make a sense and, or what the, what the requirements are, um, uh, in our city, if there's a way that we can either move them around or eliminate them from the city. Um, uh, because I know that was the discussion with the Lindell piece. And I didn't want, I know that wasn't germane to the conversation we're having then, but I wanted to raise it now. Um, and I'd be interested in having some conversations around those pawn shop licenses. And then, uh, finally, um, I just want to say, uh, to my colleagues that I, I've had a chance to work with, some of you won't be returning, or, and we know one person won't be returning. Um, I just want to say how much I've enjoyed working with, uh, each and every one of you. I know Sean's not here, um, but, uh, you know, as we get towards the end of the year here, just want to thank you. Um, you're, each and every single person here has a fine point of view and perspective, who has brought a lot to, uh, this community. Um, I, I look forward to, uh, serving with you and the, and then next council, if that's what ends up happening. Uh, but just want to say how much I've enjoyed, uh, being here with you and, uh, arguing over, uh, certain things and disagreeing with you and agreeing with certain things. Uh, it has made, uh, my days, uh, very exciting and I, uh, just enjoy, uh, that this dialogue and just, I want to thank you, uh, for the dedication that you put into, uh, giving back, uh, to the city of Bloomington and its residences. Um, it's, uh, the, the pay certainly doesn't match, uh, the, the type of dedication that each of you, uh, put into this. And I wanted to just thank you, um, no matter what, for what you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't sure whether or not, uh, Councilmember Lohman was gonna mention this or not, so I, uh, will take them and do this. Um, uh, Councilmember Lohman and I had the chance to, uh, join Padaw Yang, who was presenting at the AIP2 Conference in Seattle this, uh, past Friday. And we talked about the Welcome to Bloomington Design Team process that we went through to try to, uh, to provide other members of that, um, that organization's, um, uh, the folks that were attending the convention, uh, the opportunity to understand what we did, how we did it, um, what we took away from it, um, what the engagement looked like. And, um, so it was really great to offer that, uh, opportunity to, to that. We were obviously virtual. Um, but it was, uh, it was a nice way for us to share, you know, yet another, um, intentional activity with community engagement that, um, was driving the, you know, Bloomington Tomorrow Together plan. So, um, I think that was really cool. And I thank Councilmember Lohman for showing up for it, because otherwise it would have just been me. That would have been weird. Uh, and, uh, Padaw did a great job. So, you know, kudos to Padaw for, um, you know, I think, I don't, she was setting things up for me while on, uh, leave and stuff like that from, um, uh, so, you know, she obviously worked, uh, very, very hard to, to be a part of that, uh, presentation. So, it was good. And I hope that at some point we'll have some recap of it. Yeah. Oh, and also, uh, I had the privilege of doing the council minute this past week. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Well done. You did a good job.
Yeah, thank, well, if Councilmember Lohman would have listened to it, you'd have known the questions about the mine in Mile Creek, but that's all right. No judgment, no judgment. Um, uh, it was really fun. I never had, I'd never had a chance to work with a teleprompter before. It was my very first time. Uh, so, um, and it's very big font, and I didn't change it for you. I promise. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to do that. Um, it was really cool. And we, I just can't say enough about Emily Taplin and just how incredibly professional and competent she is. It was a real pleasure. Thanks.
Well, thanks for pinching on that. Did a ju, did a nice job. So, Counsel, is there anything else tonight? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. No further business. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We are adjourned. Thanks for the discussion tonight, Counsel. Staff, well done. Thank you very much. Everybody who tuned in tonight and stuck with us, thank you very much. Have a great rest of your week.